Of course, Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Mayor Wallace.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Bass is absent.
Okay, moving on to new business, public employee performance evaluations, government codes. Public, is there anybody on Zoom?
We have one participant.
Perfect.
We have one participant on Zoom, so go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who would like to provide public comment, please hit the raise hand button. They do not intend to provide public comments.
Okay, well then, seeing no public comment, we'll move to closed session.
Yep, and whoever is on our Zoom platform will be closing this platform and opening again at 5:30 for the regular meeting, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to our Spanish interpretation.
Thank you, the following message will repeat in Spanish. We are offering live interpretation into Spanish via Zoom platform. To access our Spanish channel, press the interpretation button at the bottom of your screen, or you will see a globe icon, choose Spanish. If you're joining via Zoom smartphone app, select your language by clicking more or the three dots at the bottom of your screen. Select language interpretation and choose Spanish. Bienvenidos, estamos ofreciendo interpretación en español en vivo y en directo durante nuestra sesión en la plataforma Zoom. Para tener acceso a interpretación, oprima el icono del globo terráqueo al pie de su pantalla y seleccione Spanish o español según su formato. Si está uniéndose a nosotros vía Zoom en su teléfono inteligente, seleccione los tres puntitos al pie de su pantalla, elija interpretación de idiomas y pulse Spanish o español para iniciar su canal. Thank you, back to you.
Thank you very much. Now for our land acknowledgement, the city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and home of the Washi'ueh. The people from here known today as the Washoe tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washoe lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the city council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washoe tribal communities that are the past, present, and future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. Now if everybody would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Cindy Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bass.
Here.
Mayor Wallace.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stroud, will you please provide a closed session report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, we had one item on closed session this evening, public employee performance evaluations for the city manager and city attorney, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. Okay, moving on to our first item, it's a proclamation recognizing April 2025 as neurodiversity and autism celebration month, and if we can have everybody please, for this item, join me at the podium, Ms. Reagan, Mrs. Drennan, Caitlin, are you coming up? And Simba, we can't forget Simba. Hi Caitlin. So, the city of South Lake Tahoe recognizes April 2025 as neurodiversity and autism celebration month, whereas neurodiversity, including autism, is a lifelong aspect of human diversity that enriches our community with individuals experiencing the world in unique ways, impacting communication, social interaction, and behavior. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that autism affects an estimated one in 36 children in the United States, highlighting the need for greater celebration, understanding, and support. And whereas, individuals who are neurodivergent, including those with autism and their families, deserve access to the resources, services, and opportunities necessary to lead fulfilling and meaningful lives. And whereas, Access Tahoe and the South Lake Tahoe Special Needs Community have been instrumental in advocating for inclusivity, education, and support for neurodivergent individuals and their families. That's hard to say a lot of times. Whereas, South Lake Tahoe is committed to fostering a welcoming, inclusive, and supportive community for all individuals regardless of ability and to promoting greater celebration and acceptance of neurodiversity. And whereas, neurodiversity and autism celebration month provides an opportunity to celebrate the unique strengths and talents of neurodivergent individuals to support their families and caregivers and to encourage meaningful action towards inclusivity. Now therefore, the City of South Lake Tahoe City Council do hereby proclaim April 2025 as neurodiversity and autism celebration month and encourages all residents, businesses, and community organizations to increase their understanding, acceptance, and support of neurodivergent individuals. This proclamation is presented with great appreciation to Access Tahoe and the South Lake Tahoe Special Needs Community in recognition of their continued dedication in advocating for and supporting neurodivergent individuals. We have with us today Angie Reagan from Access Tahoe, Mrs. Chief Drennan, and Chief Drennan and Jen's daughter Caitlin. I'm a part of the special needs family community, and I can tell you that these individuals are very special, very special to us in the community, so thank you all. Would you like to speak? Sue, you need to sign. We have something for you, but Sue needs to sign it first.
Hi, everybody, thank you city council and South Lake Tahoe, I'm Angie Reagan, glad that Jen Drennan and her family are here with me today. Oh, sorry. I'd like to begin by sharing the words of Meg Grabey, mom, children's author of the My Brother Otto series, an autistic speech-language pathologist and Culture City advocate. Autism isn't the problem, the problem is a culture that refuses to listen. The problem is when power drowns out lived experience. The problem is when leaders treat us like tragedies instead of sitting with us long enough to realize we're miracles in motion. I am not less, autistic kids are not less, families raising them are not less. We are not waiting to be saved, we are waiting to be understood, and we're not going anywhere. Tonight, on behalf of Access Tahoe and the South Lake Tahoe Special Needs Community, many who are autistic, neurodivergent, and live with sensory needs, I humbly and proudly accept this proclamation for Autism and Neurodiversity Celebration Month. This month is not just about awareness or acceptance, it's about celebrating who we are and taking action, because approximately one in four people lives with a sensory need or invisible disability. That includes autism, neurodivergence, ADHD, PTSD, dementia, Parkinson's stroke, intellectual disabilities, and more. And we deserve more than accommodation, we deserve true inclusion. We believe Tahoe can lead, let's become a certified sensory-inclusive community through Culture City, the world's leading nonprofit on sensory accessibility. We envision a Tahoe where recreational spaces, events, and venues are accessible to all minds and bodies. This is one powerful step toward a kinder, more understanding city and Tahoe region for both locals and guests. Here are a few more action steps we invite you to take with us. One, join us Thursday, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., and make peace for a Hawaiian-themed celebration of autistic and neurodivergent joy. Come meet our community and celebrate inclusion. Two, join Access Tahoe's upcoming roundtables on disability and sensory-inclusive communities. Three, read along with us as part of a region-wide book club. Pick up The Anti-Ableist Manifesto by Tiffany Yu. This book will help guide us towards collective change through improved understanding and true access and inclusion. Four, in the spirit of the pride flag sidewalk painting, I'd like to also request a disability pride flag sidewalk painting this year for Disability Pride Month in July. Five, please visit culturecity.org to learn about sensory-inclusive spaces and certification. Let's make Tahoe a national model of inclusion, access, empathy, as we celebrate neurodiversity. And lastly, please be kind, be patient, be understanding, not just this month, but every month, to every person. Let's not just proclaim inclusion, let's live it, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you on behalf of our family, on behalf of the families of the special needs and disabled community here in South Lake Tahoe. We've been working hard to bring inclusion, create inclusion, create space for us, kind of riding on Angie's coattails for the last couple of years, and so this is really exciting for us as families, and so we just want to say thank you, and we feel very honored that you see us and include us now, thank you.
Thank you both for everything you do.
Here's the book, and I think Amanda Simon is on Zoom and might want to say something, if that's okay.
Absolutely, thank you for that reminder, Ms. Reagan. Ms. Blankenship is...
I do see Amanda on...
Yep.
Amanda, did you want to speak, if you could go ahead and raise your hand? Go ahead.
Awesome, thank you so much, we really appreciate this, like Jen and Angie both said, I just want to do this, say this amazing quote by Albert Einstein, "Everybody is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it's stupid." So let's create Tahoe to be neurodiverse-affirming and bring out the genius in everybody.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, that got me. Okay, moving on. Thank you all so much for being here for that. Now is the time for public communications, this is the public's opportunity to speak on any topic not listed on this agenda. Comments shall be limited to four minutes. In accordance with the Brown Act, the city council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Please come forward. Ms. Natalia, not even gonna try.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. So, as you know, my name is Natalia Viatorek, and I am here to bring up concerns regarding the inclusionary housing ordinance, which was approved in 2023 and implemented in 2024. As a local architect, I am seeing the impact of this firsthand, and I was hoping the council would consider taking a second look at the language of this ordinance. Though I understand and agree with the intent of this, in that Tahoe needs more affordable housing, and that means smaller homes are desirable, I have concerns about how the fees are being calculated and applied. The inclusionary housing ordinance essentially encourages developers and property owners to build smaller by requiring the inclusion of housing units which can be bought or rented at 30% AMI or to pay an in-lu fee which increases as the square footage of the residence grows. Projects up to 3,000 square feet pay around $6,000 a square foot for every foot over 2,000. However, projects which are larger than 3,000 square feet pay closer to $17 a square foot, which is a huge jump. The code section provides the following exemptions to the in-lu fee: projects which have less than 2,000 square feet of living area, multifamily projects used for long-term rentals, deed-restricted projects for those making less than 120% AMI, or rebuilds due to natural disasters. Otherwise, homeowners must either include extra housing units or pay the in-lu fee. The table listed in Section 6.27.030 lists the percentages of inclusionary housing units required depending on the overall square footage of the project. Realistically, these would be impossible to apply to a single family since they range from 5% to 17%. So this option is realistically only applicable for multifamily projects. That means that single families must pay the in-lu fee. Most existing homes in Tahoe are old, from the 60s and 70s, so many of the projects I work on are rebuilds or major additions. When the fee is applied to a rebuild or an addition, over 50% of the existing area, so let's say adding 1,001 square feet to, so adding 1,001 square feet to something like 2,000 square feet existing, would then require the fee to be applied to the entirety of the habitable square footage. So additionally, this ordinance implies that the appropriate rebuild of a 6,000-square-foot home should reduce the habitable area to 2,000 square feet or less, which isn't really realistic in today's market. So I would appreciate it if the council considered the fee to be applied for habitable area being added over what's already there. So let's say if a 6,000-square-foot home is rebuilt as an 8,000-square-foot home, 2,000 square feet would be charged at the in-lu fee in its category, so in this example that would be $17.65 per square foot. The difference is a staggering amount, at 8,000, it would be 141,200 in fees versus the 2,000 difference, which would be closer to 35,300. In the addition example, if 1,001 square feet is added to the 2,000-square-foot home, at 1,001 square feet at $16.77, it would come out to about 17,000 versus 3,000 square feet, so the overall area including the existing, now we're at over 50,000. So, I understand that homes over 5,000 square feet seem large, but the reality is that building smaller in Tahoe is somewhat prohibitive from a construction cost perspective. And though I agree that a fee for very large homes is appropriate, I would urge the council to reconsider how this fee is being calculated and applied. Thank you for your time, and have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Ms. McCall.
Good evening, I'm Mary McCall, this is the first time I've attended a meeting in the evening, a new experience, glad to see there's so many passionate, interested people in this town. I am here regarding the golf course parking lot renewal, and I wanted to say John and I have spoken, and there were some conversations. It was scheduled to be on the agenda tonight, and I diligently really worked hard to get that to you for your approval before May 1st, which is the day you want there. But since we don't, it's not on the agenda, I'll take this moment to notice the public, the general public of these conversations that I think are necessary. I want to give kudos especially to Dennis Churchill, who is the lead, the commander of the maintenance department for the city. The maintenance that was deferred and was supposed to be done before the last three-year renewal still hadn't been done, but it got done so that we could have a conversation about a renewal of that golf course parking lot. I think your activities and your dynamics regarding deferred maintenance needs a little overhaul and a little attention. I want to say congratulations to John on finally, after 38 years, getting a youth program for the city's youth to learn how to play golf on a jewel of a golf course in the middle of town. He got that going in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club, which is a nonprofit. The conversation I would have to you is, for the entire summer, I kept looking for the notice to the general public, the people that you serve, so that everybody's kid can be involved in that. I don't want six kids, if possible, I want a commitment, let's do something great for the youth of this program. There is no reason we can't have a Tiger Woods from South Lake Tahoe, and it's just time we get focused on America's youth. Yes, I acknowledge and congratulations to your daughter on her autistic, and I want to say that in our land, four children out of 10 are afflicted by families of alcoholism and drug addiction and gambling addiction, and here is an opportunity to get them redirected in a great game that is demanding of good manners, good sportsmanship, and a lot of things, and you have this in the middle of town with great transportation at a great price. So I hope, I hope, I pray, I cry, I want to see a commitment from this community to its youth, and one would be at that golf course whom I feel has been jacked around for the last 15 years and not given the attention that it deserves. So if we could try to get that done, I'd appreciate it very much. Okay, I would also suggest, as a matter of public safety in the year 2025, and because the golf course has people from time to time walking around, baby carts, people go on the golf course when there's people in play, that we have a defibrillator there at the golf course, just in case. This would be a great, just a safety issue, it would be worth the extra money, I think. And the last thing, that golf course is a stronghold of this community, developed at its highest and best use and doesn't hurt anybody, and it's going to be 100 years old. And I know this because the archives were given to me by Lauren Thomaselli, and this is the 100 years, and I am expecting the city to do something, or to help me do something spectacular, to remember and to honor all the hard work that went into that golf course, and all of this.
Thank you, Ms. McCall, thank you. Ms. Reagan?
Hi, everybody, thanks again for today and just giving more attention to people with disabilities. I'm just hoping to draw a little bit more attention to our seniors in our senior center as far as maintenance and funding and just a little TLC love. They do have a potluck this week at 5:00 on Thursday, so if you'd like to bring a dish and join us, we would love that. Senior Inc. also just has a member drive going, so under Senior Inc., anyone over 50 can join, so even just getting more members that way could help boost Senior Inc., so we can get members up and a little bit more activity, get volunteers, exercise, art, music, just all the good things for all our great seniors, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item not listed on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, open up our Zoom platform, I do see we have one hand raised, Melissa Soderstone.
Yes, thank you, Melissa Soderstone, South Lake Tahoe. I just wanted to call in today to ask everyone to call their senators and ask them to vote no on H.R. 471, the Fix Our Forests Act. This does not provide the community protection that it says it does, is actually, would be more aptly named the Other F Word Our Forests Act. What we need is these funds to be directed towards infrastructure and not ecocide. So again, call your senators, the Capitol switchboard is 202-224-3121, and ask them to vote no on the Fix Our Forests Act. In light of Trump's recent executive orders calling for clear cuts in our public forests, our public lands, this is essential that we stop the Fix Our Forests Act as well as the act to amend the Endangered Species Act. There are numerous wildland destructive bills in Congress right now, so please call your senators, call your reps every day, and ask them to not screw our environmental laws and to not clear cut our forests. And on another note, I would like to thank you for your recognition of Autism Awareness Month. Our neurodivergent community members are not a burden on their families, they deserve the recognition every single day, they deserve our support as a community. I do ask that if you heard the comments that were made by RFK Jr. this week, that you do call in and ask your representatives, your senators, to please demand his resignation for his upward comments towards this community, and I thank you for your time today. No on Fix Our Forests, thanks.
There are no additional public comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Just a note for the agenda, item number 25, which is the Kiwanis, the Lake Tahoe Kiwanis Club donation to the recreation center, we're going to move that to immediately after our consent agenda, and speaking of the consent agenda, we will move on to that item. Councilmembers, do you have any recusals or comments?
Do commissioner reports?
Thank you, yes. Let's back up just a little bit. Are there any city commissioners in the audience that would like to give a report? Mr. Gregorich. I apologize for forgetting you.
We got it.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Gregorich, I'm co-chair of your Parks and Recreation Commission, I wanted to cover a couple of things. First, thank you to the council for approving in the mid-year budget, a couple new positions and some equipment and furnishings for the new rec center. I know we've got another construction season, it seems like there's, you know, a bunch still to do, but it'll happen real quick, and in less than a year from now, we want to be open. There is some lead time involved in hiring people and ordering stuff and getting it and putting it in place, so thank you for that. Second thing, I wanted to let everybody know that Parks and Rec has put out, they put out twice a year their program guide, so there's a new program guide out. I think they made 1,000 copies available at the rec center, also online, and they've got their own website, cityofslt.us/parksandrecreation, and just wanted to, there's a lot of stuff going on, but just to highlight some of them. You know, in the disability month section, we will have Moby Mats this summer at Connolly Beach, starting Memorial Day, and we will have the wheelchair access again at El Dorado Beach. Junior Giants is a popular youth program, signups are available for that right now. There will be a new cornhole league for the adults, for the seniors, there's a crochet and coffee sessions, just a whole, a whole lot of different things, and we'll be opening the campground, we'll open first weekend in May, and there's more, you can run through the program guide and see just what exciting things we're doing.
As a commissioner for Parks and Rec, I just wanted to back up David here because he does such a great job of speaking in front of you, but also to thank you for the money that you've appropriated for the rec center, it really is helping, and we are working on fundraising for you through the Parks Foundation, and we're trying to bring more money to it so we can get level two, or tier two and tier three funding for all the stuff that we need for the rec center.
Thank you, Mr. Gregorich, thank you, Mrs. Maxheimer. Mr. Messina?
Hi, I'm glad to see everybody again. I'm a member of the Coalition on Aging for the El Dorado County, and speaking for myself, not them, I would like to inform everybody that the next commission meeting will be held here in South Lake Tahoe, and I would like to see a large turnout of our local residents. It'll be at the HHS A Large Conference Room, 3368 Sandy Way, South Lake Tahoe, and we really, they only come up here twice a year, so we really should get some turnout there. I'd like to see some of the city councils show up too, if they could, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Mr. Messina, can you tell us the date and time?
Oh, I thought I did, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
May 15th, and they don't have the time on here.
Will you email it to the city council, please?
Sure, I will, definitely.
Mr. Messina, if you can email me the agenda, I'd be happy to post it outside City Hall.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Messina, are there any other city commissioners that would like to give a report? Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, council, are there any recusals or questions?
Yes, I must recuse off item 16 because of a financial interest in the cannabis industry.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Jenkins?
Mayor, I would ask that we pull items 11, 13, and 18.
I thought you were joking. I thought you were joking. Okay. Mr. Roberts, do you have anything? Okay. Mr. Robbins, was your question on one of those items, 11, 13, or 18?
No, it was nine.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
Y'all are killing me.
You're killing me, Smalls.
Okay. Do you need it pulled, or do you just have a quick question?
I just have a quick question. I don't need it pulled.
Okay. So item number 13, that would be the fire department. Mr. Robbins, go ahead and ask your question of Chief Drinon.
No, not, mine was nine, the swimming.
Sorry, it's confusing. Yours is nine. Yours is Mr. Stark.
Yeah, I just, I had discussed this a little bit in the staff meeting on Monday. The, I think it's great. This is about, for everyone in the audience, this is about the city providing fee waivers for the school district to do swim lessons in our, in our rec center for the third grade. And my only question is, I would like to see if we can talk to LTUSD and ask if they're interested in expanding it to more grades than just third. Many kids show up in our community older than third grade and might not have gone through third grade swim lessons. And swimming in our community is a public safety item. And I've been vocal about that in terms of expanding lifeguards for our, for our rec center so that we can have more swim lessons. So it's just a request if we can, and I wanted to bring it to council to get their input as well, if we can reach out to LTUSD and say if they're interested in doing more grades than just third, that we would be interested in expanding the fee waiver program or supporting that in some way.
If there's a, the question, I can certainly reach out to LTUSD to see if they're interested in expanding.
I know they do like different sports in different years, and just swimming is a public safety.
Mr. Robbins, would you please bring that up at the end of the meeting so that we can bring it back on a future agenda? Because I, with a fee waiver, do we have to, do we have to approve that, Ms. Stroud? Or can the, can they just?
Well, they can go just ask.
There's two things here. The city council would have to approve a fee waiver. And second of all, we issued bond debt for the rec center. And we would make, need to make sure that we comply with our bond covenants. So if it, you know, there's ways to handle that. We have issued debt in the past. The city can cover that fee if they choose to out of another fund that doesn't dip into the revenues generated. But that's another conversation, I think.
The first question is, is the school district interested in additional grades? Before we have a longer conversation about the how, the question is, would they, is there an ability for the school district to do more swim lessons than just the third grade also? If, if then there is, then I would like it to come back later. But I'm not ready to ask for an agenda item yet because we haven't asked the school district yet.
Participate in the cost of those lessons because.
Yeah. If, if.
The question of interest rather than commitment on our side, I think that's.
This is all conditional on, do they have an interest first? If they do, come back, let us know. Then we can schedule a meeting on it. We're not ready to schedule something when we haven't asked them if they're interested yet. But I would like to see this program, an offer extended to expand this program.
Okay, we can follow back up.
Perfect. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Thank you. Okay, we will move to public comment on items on the agenda. This encompasses items 2 through 17 minus 11 and 13. Mr. Mosher.
11, 13, and 18.
Yeah, but 18, I said through 17. So I should have said it differently. Mr. Mosher, thank you. Do you need, are you commenting on more than one item? Just one?
Number seven.
Number seven.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Yes, this is item number seven about modifying seasonal no parking restrictions on certain streets in Lakeside Residential Neighborhood. Number one is the new map allows for parking in the front of, and I requested, and Mr. Najad suggested that instead of having opposite side of the street, one side, to have everybody just have to park in front of their, in front of their residence. And the response was only three places or four places are given in the new map. 873 Park, which has been operating all along here for the last several years, is an illegal VHR, number one. And they have parking in front on Park Avenue. They have a driveway garage. 4043, which is next to that on Azure, is a permitted hosted rental with no one really living there. I don't see lights on at night when nobody is there as guests. So as far as I know, they're renting illegally as a hosted rental. They have excess vehicles and people regularly. 4051 Azure, it's on, also has a Greenwood roadside, goes back to that, and is regularly used by Mr. Olson, his tenants, or guests, and Mark Oger and his tenants. So those are the only ones allowed to do that under this new map. This is catering to VHRs that have driveways and garages. And like you said, not even operating legally. All permit parking should be in front of the owner's property. Street parking is not, quote, "the normal" for owners, as Andy Engelhardt, our chairless leader there, LPA, stated. The west side of Azure has also the east side of Greenwood. So they have two sides of the properties there where they can actually park on. And so that's plenty of space. So the biggest problem really is beachgoers all day, every day during the summer. You know, Lakeside Park Association wants their $30 a person. And starting at 9:30, 9:00 in the morning, darn near in front of my house is all full of beachgoers. So that's actually more of the, the traffic and the problem than anything else. Boat trailers and would pickups also. And also, you know, the Nevada there, a guy was ticketed last year, July 14th, and as of April 17th, still hasn't paid a $75 ticket. He got to park his boat, his truck and boat trailer for a week in front of a driveway, neighbor's driveway. The only issue for two, only issue two permits per owner, per residence, everyone has a driveway or off-street parking area and/or garage. So if more than two guest vehicles, then they can park on State Line or Park Avenue and just walk around the corner into there. So also, no boat or boat trailer parking with the permits. 72-hour laws not enforced, and really can't be enforced. No motorhomes or campers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Is there any other, please come forward. This is on the consent agenda.
Thank you, city council members. Also, item seven.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I'm, I've lived there since 1997 as a seasonal person, and as, as are all the board members. During that time, I also was on the board. I was president of the board for a number of years. I was president when we had the permit, parking meter issue, not only at Lakeside, but on, on several other places. We lived through that summer with the, everyone having access to a permit if they, if they want to get a permit. We made it through, then of course, the issue was turned down by, by the voters. So now, I've read the board, the backup materials over here, and I'm way behind because I, you know, I'm still living here, but not in the communication loop with the Lakeside Board. So reading what has been going on, I'm, I'm amused because Thursday, I went in to sign for my beach pass, and I got this map, which you all have, a map. I don't know if the public has seen this, this map. It's what the gentleman just talked about also. The red lines on that map are no parking, no parking. So 48 of those homes there have the yellow mark, which allows them to get a permit. I'm, I happen to be one on the corner of Sunrise and Hill. The map is wrong, by the way. Hill does not go through. We have a corner there. But now, I can't have parking there for my kids, my grandkids, friends, neighbors. They can't park on my side of the street because now we're red. My neighbor up one house away can't park in front of his house or on Greenwood. So, you know, it's causing problems. And I don't believe, after talking to some of our neighbors today, that they realize what's going on in our little association. This was sent out April the 2nd in a newsletter electronically, which I can't open on my iPhone. I've been trying. I can't. But apparently, it's there. So I was shocked when I got it. I wrote you a letter with my initial thoughts about the whole thing. And it seems to me, I mean, it seems to me if I were still president, I would be recommending that we have all permits. I can, I can understand how the meadow needs to have a red line. I mean, they block it off anyhow. It's all blocked off. Folks block it off with whatever cones, rocks, logs, something. It's blocked off. That, that really could be one. Signage would be much easier if it were all just permits. You know, you could put permits, the signs at the entrances to the streets, not have to worry about, oh, let's go downhill and put a no parking sign here, and then a few more feet, no parking here. So people would know that those are no parking zones. So it seems to me that would be a much simpler, simpler solution. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. And I guess my time is up. But anyway, thank you so much. And I hope we can resolve this so that it's equal.
Thank you.
Because all of the board members have yellow parking.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Okay, Messina, we'll go to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on today's consent. First, we have Ms. Ballard.
Hi, everyone. I hate to take you back a moment, but I'm one of the commissioners who needed to give a report. But no one checked that I was on Zoom. So is this okay really quick?
Ms. Stroud.
Can I give, can I give my commissioner a report?
Yes, please do very, very quickly, Ms. Ballard. Thank you.
Okay, my name, okay. I serve on the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission. I'm pleased to share an update on our recent activities. We had $3,000 remaining from our previous micro grant budget, and the commission voted to use those funds for a special opportunity to have a gallery show at the airport. The applications ran from February 10th to March 10, 2025. We were thrilled to receive 50 applications, the most we've ever had. The majority came from local artists around the Tahoe Basin, which is a testament to the incredible creative talent in our region. We also received applications from out of state and even internationally, which shows that Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe is becoming a destination for artists foreign wide. The, this initiative is our first step towards building a more consistent year-round art presence, ideally with new gallery shows at the airport each quarter. We are proud to announce that Blair Latos has been selected for the upcoming airport art installation exhibition. Looking ahead, we are preparing to launch our 2025 micro grant program, which will offer partial funding for publicly accessible artistic projects within the city. These projects may include visual, performing, and literary, literary, oh, literally, literary arts, as well as culture events. The last round of micro grants was a great success, and we are excited to see what the next round of applications will bring once it's officially announced in the coming months. Thank you for your continued support of the arts in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
All right, we're taking public comment on today's consent agenda. We have Rafael.
Hello. Hello, this is Rafael Campos. I was, I want to refer to Jack. He just spoke about the parking. I am on the corner of Hill Road and Greenwood. And I just want to say that it's, what it is, it's parking's very special and kind of hard to find and get. I know with tourism, it's, we are in a tourist, tourist area, designated tourist area. So we get a lot of traffic from that. And it's all good. I love, I love the tourism. And what we have here is beautiful to share with everybody. But my, my, my issue or concern is to just ask and thank you ahead of time for any consideration on this corner, because this corner, it, those two spaces that are right on Hill Road and Greenwood are both have been utilized, used not by, used by all the neighbors here. And we have construction going on. Workers, I've made friends with them, and they were, you know, they were, I had questions because I was, I made friends with them. Like I said, we got along. And it was real nice to have them, they parked their cars right there. They had to. There was nowhere else. How could they get in and out? There was concrete going on, and there was, you know, gravel and concrete and sand there. And they picked it up and moved it. But it's a very prime location that we needed to be functional. It never impeded any traffic. The way we were parking was parallel with the street. And also on Hill Road, the rear corner, I can parallel park there and be out of the way. What was, was people would park in front of my trees here, and that would cut off a whole half of the street. So yes, that was an issue from time to time, not continuously, but, you know. And that's another thing. I'm sad to see those horses gone because that was an icon here, very special and very rare. And yeah, I understand some of the issues that were brought up. But, you know, there is somewhere else right now in Cambridge. It's, and I don't understand why we can't come back here. But yeah, that's my, my fair, just thank you again for consideration. And any reissue on the side of red mark and light for the owners that, we, we live here. We know what's going on. I know when they surveyed, they, they were going by guidelines. But what really goes on is a lot of function on those corners. And I would like to readdress that, maybe reconsider on that. Because getting a permit, it was like getting beach passes. And we had permits. It worked better than coupons, which, which we have to issue one every time. We have somebody come up. It's just going to be a very difficult in timing. We don't know when they're coming. Sometimes they show up. So maybe like Jack was suggesting, a permit for the owners so we don't have to bother anybody on their weekends or days.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments.
Thank, thank you for.
All right, next up, we have Lakes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Judy Goddard with Lakeside Park Association, also commenting on item number seven. I understand some of the frustration of some of the members. And when the board initially approached the city discussing a permit program, the request was for both sides of the street to have permit parking. After the survey was conducted by the city, it was determined that the streets are too narrow to have parking on both sides because it would block or impede emergency response vehicles, such as fire trucks and ambulances. So this is why the one side of the streets had to be no parking. I understand how, you know, people are frustrated and inconvenienced by how the layout is. But I would hope that they also understand that the protection of their properties and the safety of themselves and their, their guests are the main focus at this point. And some feel it's never been a problem before, but honestly, that's no guarantee for the future. And I think it's better to be proactive rather than reactive. This is just during the heavy traffic times of the year. And it's not just the beach that contributes to the parking problem. The summer concert series is a big problem. The Celebrity Golf event is also a big problem. And all of these things were certainly taken into consideration. And it was also our understanding that, once it was determined, the narrowness of the streets would require one side to be no parking. And it was our understanding that this would still be implemented regardless of the permits would be implemented. So it would be in the best interest of the members to have those permits, rather than having to compete with the general public for those parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no additional hand raised at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. I, I am going to ask Mr. Najad a couple of questions. Did we mail out notices to the homeowners and seek public input aside from the Lakeside Park Association?
Since this request was made by the association, we requested from them to send out notices. And then because of that, there were some concerns and comments from the public that not many of them may have received. Therefore, on, I think on October 12th was the time that we received the request. Then we had another meeting with the association. We asked the association to inform all of the members. And we held a virtual meeting on March 19th. And those who had contacted me, I informed them about the meeting. So we had the meeting. And as a result of that meeting, they requested a couple of modifications on Azure. And we are proposing those modifications to make sure all of the residents are satisfied. So we So we have reached out to the public, and we have informed everybody within this neighborhood of these actions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Najad. Do you have a question, Mr. Jenkins?
I have a question. First, of course, I have the highest respect in regard for the Public Works Department's leadership. Excuse me. I think, is it, is it fair to say that part of the problem we have, where we have these major publics draws, the beach, the river, we have inadequate parking to address it? And yet, policy, we, I don't know if you'd agree, well, you probably wouldn't want to comment on this, but policy is to diminish the amount of parking, both on existing and new facilities, rather than to accommodate parking for locals and visitors. And I, and I'm concerned with this issue now, because I think it represents yet another, as Councilmember Cole used to say, Mayor, former Mayor Cole, that we're very underparked as, as, as a community. Is, if, do you dare even comment on that, given what, what, what has been traditional policy in the city? We're, and, and that is the issue, that we are underparked. We have millions of visitors, but we have inadequate parking. And we're going to move everybody into a bus, and they're going to park somewhere, I guess. But that's, so that's, that's the general rhetoric. I, I would have been more flamboyant, but I'm not feeling that well tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Najad, do you want to respond to that? You don't have to. He gave you an out.
Well, the only thing I want to add is that about two years ago, we introduced the residential parking permit program, and it is up to the neighborhoods to request this type of a treatment. It's mostly to reduce intrusion by outside people that are parking in the neighborhoods. It's a neighborhood protection plan. We have implemented this in Hevindee. I think it has been extremely successful, because it has reduced all of those impacts. And I hope the same thing will be true here. So this is a true practice parking management strategy that has been very successful in many agencies. So we have listened to the neighborhood, we have accommodated them, and I'm pretty sure everybody will be satisfied. But if there are adjustments that needs to be made, obviously, you know, we will hear that and make those adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Najad. Okay, we've had public comment. I'll bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion on items two through 18, minus 11, 13, and 18, with acknowledging Mr. Bass's recusal on item 16. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah. I wrote them down. We have a motion and a second, we can vote.
I just want to confirm, so that was Mr. Bass and Mr. Jenkins, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship.
It was very quiet, so let me just get those recorded, it's okay?
I'm myself today.
Okay, that motion unanimously carries, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Okay, moving on to item number 11, the Tahoe Valley Stormwater and Green Belt Improvement Project for Phase One paving. Ms. Greenlaw is not here. Will that be you, Mr. Najad?
Yes.
One second. Mr. Jenkins, do you want to full staff report, or do you just have questions?
I, I, I just have a question in regard to the, the project. I support in, in concept the project. My question is, do we know what the cost is to maintain this project once it's built, and from where the funds will come to maintain it? And secondly, the project proposes $303,000 from the road rehabilitation account. And my, my cryptic comment, I guess, is these are street maintenance funds that would otherwise be used for, for street maintenance, I guess. And are the remainder, are the remainder of these funds coming from grants? And when do our streets, this isn't really, this is a question more for the policy body. When do our streets get the money, the resources that they need to maintain them in a, in a year-round basis? And because I see this road, these road funds are not going to maintain existing streets, or they're not going to maintain. So, so that's my question, is when, when, when do the rest of the streets get, get, get addressed? What are the issues there?
So the funds, the $300,000 and three, $300, $303,000 is coming from roadway rehab program. Those funds are for pavement rehab. And we are directing those funds to basically do the paving on D Street, F Street, and Boranza. So it's not really the maintenance funds, it's the program for roadway rehab that we have every year. In fact, we just received the bids for this year, roadway rehab, which we hope to bring to the council in the next two meetings or so. So this is the part of the regular roadway pavement rehab program. So we're just bringing that money and doing all of that work with this project.
Could you use more money?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to be asking more money, absolutely.
I know where to get it.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Najad on item number 11, for this paving project?
Mayor, if.
I think that was the question. It is a paving project.
Mayor, if I may also, regarding the Tahoe Valley Green Belt portion, what's the cost of the maintenance? It's anticipated to eventually be about $50,000 annually going forward, and that'll be a part of our street maintenance efforts.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, thank you, Mr. Najad. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this paving project in the Tahoe Valley Stormwater and Green Belt area? Anybody on Zoom, Ms. Blankenship? Oh, I'm sorry, please, Mr. Spiel, I, I turned away just at exactly the right time.
It was my fault.
Or I was really ignoring you. No, I'm judged.
I'm a little bit late. Hi, everybody, my name's Nick Spiel, and I just wanted to thank you for moving forward with this, this stormwater improvement project and road rehabilitation project. I live just in the area there, and I've seen how much flooding we've had until recently, and how that really tears up the roads, which makes them really, really rough, especially for riding a bicycle on, but really for everyone to, to ride in that, in that network. So I think that that's, that stormwater project leveraging outside grants and rehabilitating those streets is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiel. Sorry for missing you. Anyone else? Now we'll move to Zoom.
We have no members on our Zoom platform with their hands raised.
Motion, motion to approve?
Okay. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Bass. Is there any further discussion? If not, please vote.
Unanimously carries.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Moving on to item number 13, license agreement with California Tahoe Conservancy to use Motel Six property for a public safety training. I'm going to assume that this is Chief Drennan.
Good evening. Wondering if you were looking for a full presentation or questions?
Yes.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hi, this, Chief, first of all, thank you for the great job you're doing and for the great job you did at the Fire Forum the other, the other day, along with the chambers and so on, so thank you. It was, it was well done. I guess my, my question is more generic, because it focuses on Motel Six. And this may not be in your bail way. I, I support the concept of training and using these facilities, since they're going to be torn down someday, that I, I support that. I guess the question probably, probably goes more to the city manager. When will the Motel Six be demolished and the site restored? What is the date certain? Are there, are there, are they maintaining their property? How long does the existing chain link fence remain in its present condition? And what actions have been taken to secure the development commodities from demolition to stay within the city limits? Those are all, I think those are more other, other policies. So the same manager and I have talked about it, but I, thank you.
I cannot address the demolition part. So a demolition permit was submitted to our Development Services Department on April 15th. It's under review, has not yet been issued. As part of that demo permit, that would include removal of the chain link fence. Restoration is something I believe the CTC is still working on obtaining funding, as well as planning efforts to analyze what that restoration project looks like. Boardwalks, public amenities, flood zone treatment measures that they're going to implement. Those are things they need to look at. We don't have a lot to say there. The MOU that we signed with the CTC does address our commitment to work on shifting the commodities that are on that site to another project in the city. We're going to continue to push to have that happen when there's an appropriate project to do so.
Sorry.
Your three minutes is up.
Time's up.
That's the first time I've ever been buzzed.
And if I may, Mr. City Manager, I, I believe that the CTC Executive Director, Mr. Vasquez, said that they fully support keeping those commodities within the city limits. And that, so I assume that you all, you all, you all, all of you will be working toward that end. Thank you.
As Vice Chair of the California Tahoe Conservancy, I will make a commitment that those commodities will stay in this community if I can manage that, which I'm sure I can. Mr. Robbins, you have questions for Chief Drennan?
Yeah, wasn't really going to bring this up otherwise, but since it's off the agenda, anyway. A handful of months ago, the city police department held a SWAT training exercise at Welcome's Towing. Similar sort of concept as to what you seem to be proposing. What I noticed, and I, I gave a little feedback to city staff, was there was a sign that said "Police Training", but it was small, and it wasn't particularly visible. And it was, what was a lot more visible was the police in full SWAT gear running in and out of Welcome's Towing. Now, Welcome's Towing is off Eloise, it's a little out of the way. Not as many people are going to notice it, but it, this is on Highway 50. This is on our main drag. So my only request would be to, to ask if, when you're doing operations and training operations there with fire engines and equipment and responders doing things, to make sure that signage that says "This is a training activity" is larger and more visible. Just as in a particular example, the sign that was on Welcome's Towing faced across the street, not down either side of the street, so it wasn't really visible to drivers on Eloise. Again, Eloise is not heavily trafficked, so not a ton of people. 50 is a different story.
Yeah, anytime we do like controlled burn alongside any of the highways and whatnot, we'll, we'll be using digital electronic signage in both directions. We'll full court press with social media and all the rest.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good point, Mr. Robbins. Thank you, Chief Drennan. Is there any other questions for Chief Drennan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to make public comment on this item? Seeing, oh, Ms. McCall.
Mary McCall, I think I can speak to the Motel Six. There was a time a couple of years ago when somebody decided that there would be some kind of car show at South Lake Tahoe, and they did it online, but they didn't get a permit from the city. My family, the members of my family, including my relatives, we tried our hardest to get Motel Six to agree that you could use their parking lot, especially at the restaurant, as overflow parking. But they didn't want anything to do with it because of the liability, and it was too late notice. But we did try to help you, the city, accommodate that. Okay, so Motel Six is four acres of a footprint with paved parking that's been there for 50 years, at the request of the city of South Lake Tahoe. I would suggest as a possibility, as an idea, since you need parking, that's four acres of a footprint, and part of it can be parking in the middle of town. Underneath the paved parking is six feet of clean fill from the building of the airport. And it was all engineered by the best engineers in San Francisco, California, to every specification that the TRPA required. It is perfect, okay? And there is no leakage from any, anything, okay? Why? Because we owned it, and we made sure that it wasn't, because we didn't want to destroy the lake. Okay? So it doesn't need to be restored to wetlands. It could be used as a footprint, as partly affordable housing reinvented there. There was 143 rooms. It could be, it could be used for an art and cultural center. It could be used for training. But it is commercial, and that commercial piece of property and parking does bring money to the coffers of the city. And don't we all need money for everything? So here's an opportunity for you to have more parking. And what else is really great, in the past, there is a city bus stop there. There's two accesses there, there's two signs there, four signs. So the public really knows digitally, they have those digital signs of what's going on there. And now there is Lake Link, so you can live in Garnaville and decide to come to an event at Lakeside Commons, and either take that up here and be delivered there. Or you can park your car in the middle of town and take Lake Link to the concert. Seems pretty efficient, because we have, and we also have city buses. So there you go. We've created all of these possibilities with all kinds of public funds of doing something a little bit more constructive than something that doesn't bring in money to the city, especially. I don't think personally, and this is my personal thing, and I've already been to the CTC today as well, because they're going to have public, they have, they're going to have a public agenda for our ideas. My biggest question is.
No, I'm sorry, we, we have a very long agenda, so thank you very much for your input. I appreciate it. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on item number 13?
Sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Messina.
Following that, well, previous speaker, it would be wrong for the city, after appropriating the money to buy this property, to now change the use of it midstream. That would be deceptive to the public in, in acquiring the funds to purchase it. And having stayed there, the best thing they can do with that motel is burn it down. So I hope that's what they're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Is there any other member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Really quickly, I'm just going to clarify. The city does not own this property. The California Tahoe Conservancy paid tens of millions of dollars for that and the many acres behind it, and it is up to them, with permits from the city, to do what they choose to do with that property. The city did not have the money to purchase that property. So, Ms. Blankenship, is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. I'll bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion on this item. Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I was going to say exactly, almost exactly what you said, which is that when it was an operating motel, the city did not own it. It was purchased by the Conservancy, which is an independent government organization, and not the city of South Lake Tahoe. We do not own the property, nor do we have the money, nor did we have the money to buy it then, nor do we have the money to buy it now. So as much as I have spoken out on, I think it would be the right thing to do to convert it into affordable housing, because it's in an excellent location for that, right on transit, it's not ours, and there isn't a source of funding to, to acquire that. So this is just not a thing that's in our purview. That being said, I think the idea of, since it's already a dilapidated building that's about to go away anyway, the actual thing on the agenda here is to use that structure for fire training while it's still there. That's what we're actually talking about, and it's not about getting, it's not about changing the ultimate fate of the building. It's while the building is still standing before its planned demolition, and that's a decision that was made by the Conservancy, not by the city. It's a decision I disagree with, but it wasn't ours to make anyway. So we might as well use it for fire training, since that's what we can do.
Would you please make a motion?
And with that, I will make a motion to authorize and direct the mayor to execute a non-destructive training license agreement with the California Tahoe Conservancy, allowing South Lake Tahoe Fire Rescue, South Lake Tahoe Police Department, and neighboring fire and law enforcement agencies to actively train at 2375 Lake Tahoe Boulevard, Motel Six site, prior to the demolition of the structures. Also noting that they are going to put in adequate signage, so that we don't freak the public out.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Robbins and Mr. Roberts. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
Mayor, may I just comment, just one comment? I have asked as a private citizen for information from the Conservancy on what other properties they wish to acquire. This is not something that the council is, nor am I representing that it is the council's position. But I've, I've asked, in the future, what more do they want to tear down in town? And/or restore, whatever term you prefer. And. And I will be meeting with the executive director. He seemed very receptive to that, to that idea, and I appreciate it, because I think we need to know what goes on in our city, and we do have a voice in what goes on in our city, because it's our city. It's not their city, it's our city.
David, I would actually, if you bring this up at APC at the very end of the meeting, which I imagine will be sometime around 1:00 AM, I would like to see that on an agenda item.
The way we're going, it will be.
A review, a review of the properties that, I would like to see that as an agendized item. I wouldn't mind actually seeing that as a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
But if you bring that up at the end, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Okay, moving on to item number 18. Agreement with Government Consulting Partners, Inc. for Citywide User Fee Study Requested. Oh, sorry. Period. Not requested. Ms. Tikamorova?
Good evening.
Would you like, I'm sorry, Mr. Jenkins, would you like to ask questions, or do you want a full staff report?
I, I don't need a staff report or a full staff report, and I want to preface my remarks by saying that I have the fullest confidence and respect for the Finance Department and its director. I'm, what I'm talking about with this item is more about what policy of the city is, and that's our job. I am not comfortable approving $71,000 for a study to grow citywide user fees in a vacuum of the impact current policies have on our economy and investment by our business and locals. I think this is a serious issue. It's a serious problem. It's difficult to build here. It's, it's expensive to build here, and I'm seeing this come forward as, as properly bringing it forward. I'm, I, I just think we need to take a step back and look at what the effect of all of our policies have on investment. We need investment if we're going to improve our environment, and, and I think it's very difficult for many people to build here or to invest here because of policies, not just the city, but the region and the state of California. Thank you. That's...
That's all a question. When you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Councilmember Jenkins and Mayor Wallace and council members, I do want to acknowledge the concern about the potential for this study to be viewed as disconnected from our economic development goals. Staff fully agrees that we must evaluate fees in the context of broader community impacts, particularly how they affect local investment, housing, and business development. To that end, this process will include staff input from multiple departments, public engagement, and council review, so that any fee adjustments are considered thoughtfully and aligned with both fiscal responsibility and economic growth and objectives.
In reply, thank you. That, I didn't realize there was that outreach process. So am I correct then in assuming that, that the results of the study or the preliminary results would be shared with the development community, and the development community would be encouraged to comment on how they see the, the proposed fees and charges affecting their, their, their willingness to invest in, in our, in our city? Is that, is that fair?
Yes, public outreach and discussion with the council members is part of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what is, what the, what the contract on the agenda item actually is. This is to assess, my understanding, and I guess I'm asking if my understanding is correct, that this is to assess what the fees should be so that they properly meet the cost recovery requirements under California law, right?
That is correct. So we...
The outcome does not actually change the fees yet, but it tells us what those fees would need to be. So this vote isn't actually changing fees. It's to do the study to say this is what the fees would be for cost recovery across the entire city, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It will, it will, we're not proposing new fees today or increases. The study will conduct the cost assessment of all the work that goes into issuing the permits or any, anything that we charge for staff, public, for services. So the study will make sure that we're not overcharging or undercharging for services, and that will be brought to council for council input on the cost recovery. So council will be able to express their opinion and direction to staff what the cost recovery should be. However, from the 2015 study, the direction to staff was the 100% towards the 100% cost recovery. However, we will evaluate the fees, whether they're too high or too low, which I doubt, but some fees, we could be missing some fees. Some fees could be excessive or unnecessary, and this will be as a part of the larger discussion.
So I would generally agree that we want to start, start from a position of knowing what is the 100% cost recovery cost of some permit or activity. But then, it's up to us, would be to say, if we want to lower those fees below the cost recovery amount by a certain amount, to incentivize certain activities or to provide benefit to certain groups. For example, we just did this a few minutes ago with the swim lesson fees for the school district by waiving them. That is an example of, we have a fee that's designed for cost recovery, and we waived it because there's a social reason to provide an incentive value. We might have the same thing for certain kinds of construction as well. But this is just to assess what the 100% cost recovery amount is. It will then come back to us, when it comes back to us for adoption, we can then make edits, changes, or construct policies to provide fee waivers under conditions that we think are beneficial to the community. But we need to know what the appropriate amount for cost recovery is as a starting point.
Yes. That's Mr. Jenkins.
Without getting too deep into this, I think we're very, as an organization, as a region, we're very big into process. We're very big into people coming in, seeking permits for business expansion, for business improvements, for home repairs, and finding that the process of use, the time length, the cost is, is very high. And, and I would, I would, the reason I'm not going to support this is because I want to see the process looked at and say, how can, what are the things, and this is not in your rubric per se, what can we do to reduce the process and turn that into progress toward investment into the community? And again, if we, if we, if we don't get more investment, all our environmental dreams, all the things that we want to do, we're not going to have. We're just going to be a poor community in the South Shore. We, so we, we have to seek investment from all, and we have to look at all our policies across a broad range, not just at full cost recovery, which, by the way, I understand state law says you cannot waive it. But you can't waive it if you've established it. But that's, unless you have redevelopment, which we don't have anymore. Okay, I'm warming up. I'll, I'll tone down now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Tikamorova? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom.
There are no hands raised on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. Back to council for further discussion or motion.
Sure. I'll forward a motion authorizing and directing the mayor to execute professional services agreement with the Government Consulting Partners, Inc. for Citywide User Fee Study and Cost Allocation Plan Preparation in an Amount Not to Exceed $70,835.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote.
That motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are done with the consent calendar. We are, as I stated before, moving on, and we're going to move up item number 25, which is approval of donation agreement with the Kiwanis of Lake Tahoe for the Multi-Generational Recreation and Aquatic Center scoreboards. Mr. Stark?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm John Stark, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm excited to bring to you all a donation agreement with the Kiwanis Club of Lake Tahoe for the new Multi-Generational Recreation and Aquatic Center scoreboards. The South Tahoe Parks Foundation has been working closely with the city to solicit charitable contributions to assist with the furnishings, equipment, and scholarship access to the new rec center. Donations made to the foundation are remitted to the city pursuant to the city's donation, sponsorship, and naming rights policy. At the August 13, 2024 City Council meeting, council approved a naming rights agreement between the city and the foundation. This agreement provides opportunities for entities to make donations in exchange for sponsorship for certain facilities at the new rec center. The two scoreboards in the gym were identified in the agreement at $25,000 apiece for sponsorship. Kiwanis Club of Lake Tahoe submitted an application to make a donation in exchange for the scoreboards to include the name and logo of Kiwanis of Lake Tahoe and in memory of Bob Bonhoezer. Kiwanis had made an initial donation of $20,000 to the foundation and will be making an additional $30,000 total in donations in 2025 and 2026. Sponsorship of the scoreboards will begin upon executing this agreement and extends for the lifetime of the scoreboards. I want to offer a big thank you from the city and the South Tahoe Parks Foundation to Kiwanis of Lake Tahoe for their generous donation towards the new rec center. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stark, and I'm glad that you mentioned in memory of Bob Bonhoezer. I was remiss in saying that. Is there any questions for Mr. Stark? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? We will be doing a full council photo op with this. They have a large check over there that they'd like to... I, I say "they," and I want to be very clear and in full transparency that I am a member of the Kiwanis Club and on the board of the Kiwanis Club.
I have a quick question.
Please, Mr. Robbins.
Actually, probably more of a joke question. We were looking at one point a while back about installing an AV system in the rec center that wasn't part of the original design, but there was some room for it, and I personally kind of lost track of that item. Whatever happened to that?
Yeah, there's an AV system in the gymnasium as well as AV equipment up in the community room upstairs.
Okay, and that was, that was the change that was made like a handful of months ago?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, I just wanted to check in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Is there any member of the public? Okay, seeing none. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to bring it back for discussion, and then once we vote, we'll do a photo. Is there any discussion on this item?
Well, I just would like to say I'm incredibly grateful to the Kiwanis that you would donate to the, to the rec center. I think this is just such a great thing, and hopefully we will see this for more donations, because we could definitely use more as we go. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Mr. Jenkins?
I too want to say this is a tremendous contribution, tremendous community support. It's, it's a wonderful gift, and thank you.
Mr. Gavon, did you want to speak? Mr. Gavon, Eric Gavon is our president for the Kiwanis Club president. I'm wearing different hats right now.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and officers. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Eric Gavon. I'm the president of the Kiwanis. It's the Kiwanis Club of Lake Tahoe, and we're, we're here today. We have some representatives. We're going to have everyone come up for a quick presentation, but I just want to let you know that this is honoring Bob Bonhoezer, and he was a Kiwanian that dedicated his life to this community and, and the service of kids within this community as well. We certainly hope that the community will keep score of this, unintended, and this will, since we're the first service club to make a donation, we hope that other clubs will follow, and we really feel that this rec center is an important cornerstone in our community here, so we're really pleased to be able to support that. Bob Bonhoezer left his estate to our club and has afforded us lots of opportunity to give back to this community. This year alone, we were able to give $87,000 in scholarships to our young men and women in the high schools locally here. So that money stays to our local, local families, and that's because of Bob Bonhoezer and his wonderful generosity. So he was a Kiwanian and an amazing citizen and a, and a friend of the community. This is a big thing for us. I have members from the club here, Dick Van Busker, Dwayne Wallace as well. I've got Jerry Klosterberg, Margie Maxheimer, Christie Fulcombe, I think's in the back somewhere, and Michelle Ammarillo. I think I said that right, maybe. Anyways, so those members are here, and we just wanted to thank you and present this check, so.
Thank you. Mr. Gavon, we are going to vote on it, accepting the money, and then we'll take a photo.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Bass?
Sure. I will put forward a motion to pass a resolution approving donation in exchange for the Kiwanis name and logo, Kiwanis of Lake Tahoe and in memory of Bob Bon...
Bonhoezer.
Bonhoezer, excuse me, on two scoreboards in the gym for new Multi-Generational Recreation and Aquatic Center beginning April 22, 2025, for the lifetime of the two scoreboards. Two, transferring $20,000 from the South Tahoe Parks Foundation to account number 704-0429036280, Rec Center Facilities and Operations. And three, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the donation agreement with Kiwanis of Lake Tahoe.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please vote?
That motion unanimously carries.
Perfect. So we are going to take a photo with the Kiwanis, and then we are going to take a short break until five minutes after seven, and we'll come back to the regular agenda.
To conduct inspections and permit services. It includes money for equipment and vehicles and office space upgrades. Currently at the police department, we're busting at the steams and we don't have more space available and we're going to have to accommodate new employees to manage this program effectively. It is also my expectation that the cost burden for these items I just mentioned will fall on and be funded by the VHR permatees. It's also my production that if funding for these items is not provided in a sustainable, long-term manner while this program gets up and running and is managed continuously, and if service, community service officers are not provided to our staffing, we as a community have a high probability of falling short on maintaining a high quality of life for our residential neighborhoods. In closing from my part of this presentation and introductory comments, I want to ensure we won't force whatever ordinance the city council adopts strictly and fairly. I will come to the city council immediately to discuss problems or successes we are witnessing as we implement the program. If needed, I will ask for those additional resources and/or ordinance amendments. The city attorney and I have recommended some operational and in our opinion, pretty straightforward proposals for the city council to consider. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to City Attorney Stroud for further staff briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. And I am now going to go through the different issue areas where we're asking for some council direction. So city council has some pretty broad discretion here tonight. And I would say the bookends are everything from re-adopt Measure T without the QVHRs in them, so continue to prohibit all VHRs in residential areas. And then maybe the other end of the bookend is just not making any changes to the 2018 ordinance and letting that come into play. And there's a lot of decisions to be made in between there, so that there's some middle ground. The 2018 ordinance is the starting point, so that's kind of the starting point for the discussion of what we want to tweak or change. And then on this table here, it's summarizing the different issues that were in the staff report. The ones that are highlighted in green are ones where the city manager and I have staff recommendations. And the issues in yellow are ones where it's really just a pure policy decision for city council to weigh in on, and we're requesting that you provide direction on what you might like to see in an ordinance amendment. I would also say in terms of the process and next steps, if city council does give direction tonight to bring back an ordinance, we could do that as early as May 16th, or sorry, May 6th for a first reading. And at that time, we would also want to bring an item to extend the moratorium so that it at least covers the process, because it'll take a little time to do the first reading and second reading and have the 30-day period before that's effective. Or we could go slower if that's council's desire. So with that, I will go ahead and get started. So the first issue where we're requesting city council policy direction, and let me just say first, the first four issues are issues that would be great and advisable to decide before we start issuing permits, because they deal with how many permits are we going to allow outside the tourist core and where are those permits going to be allowed? So it's easier to decide those things before we start issuing permits than after we start. So the first issue would be whether you want to prohibit or limit VHRs in residential areas or in certain residential areas. Second issue would be whether you want to establish a VHR permit cap lower than 1,400 permits outside the tourist core. So currently, the 2018 ordinance had that cap of 1,400 outside the tourist core. We do know from doing some analysis that about half of the properties that had VHR permits outside the tourist core in 2018 have since changed hands or sold. So if that helps decide where the cap might be appropriately set, that may be an important figure. The third issue is whether to establish a buffer between VHRs, similar to how El Dorado County has done that. And this was actually an issue that city council considered back in 2017, and we have all different faces now on the city council, but at that time, city council was looking at a buffer somewhere between 100 feet and 300 feet. And if a buffer of 150 feet, for example, was chosen, that would result in approximately 1,288 VHRs in the city. If a buffer of 300 feet were chosen, that would be 421 VHRs in the city, and that's again, outside the tourist core. The fourth issue, and this is one where we do have a staff recommendation, would be to prohibit VHRs in all multifamily dwellings. The 2018 ordinance prohibited new VHRs in multifamily dwellings, but allowed properties that had a permit prior to September 1st, 2016, to continue to have their permit renewed if it was in a multifamily dwelling. We believe that it would be appropriate, at this time, all of those permits have been extinguished, to preserve multifamily dwellings for residential use and also to avoid the nuisance issues that occur when people share a wall.
Can you clarify my question?
Sure.
When you say multifamily dwelling, there's multifamily in the sense of the physical construction of the building, and there is multi versus single family in the sense of condominiumization, where you, we generally consider an apartment-style building would be considered single-family if it's a condominium, even though it is physically a multifamily structure. What could you clarify?
Yeah, so the second point, the bullet point there is we're also recommending a definition cleanup currently in the VHR ordinance. The definition of dwelling unit and multifamily dwelling unit is not consistent really with those definitions that are elsewhere in our code in Title VI. So what we want to, the end result we want to end up with is that VHRs would continue to be allowed in attached condos only in the tourist core or commercial areas. So not in rental multifamily dwelling anywhere in the city and not in attached condos outside of the tourist core and commercial areas.
Thank you.
Yes. Also, we would clean up, for some reason that is hard for anyone here to understand, now, timeshares are included in the definition of dwelling, so they are required to get a VHR permit under the 2018 code, and I think that had been in there for a long time for the purpose of TOT tracking and collecting, but it's probably not appropriate to require a VHR permit for a timeshare, so we would like to clean that up also. And then, so the next category are more operational requirements. One suggestion would be to consider requiring VHRs to use a local property manager, and there's been a little confusion about what that means. It wouldn't be that you have to use a professional company. You could do it yourself, but you would have to do the things, like you'd have to meet the performance of what's required of a property manager, and some of that's up to council to decide what that would be. For example, you could require an in-person check-in by the property manager to go over the rules and make sure that all the tenants are who they say they are. They don't have 20 people in a five-person house. They don't have tons of cars when they're supposed to only have two. And then another idea would be to have monitoring required of the property manager to monitor outdoor noise and then have potentially a security camera to monitor the parking area and trash to make sure there's no issues there. We have talked to South Tahoe Refuse to get their input, because our 2018 ordinance had some special requirements for VHRs, specifically including bear boxes, which they have now since kind of moved away from with our recent updates to the trash code. And so they would suggest if we do require a local property manager, they would be okay removing the bear box requirement and having the property manager handle the trash cans, making sure the trash and recycling and yard waste is put out and then taken back in appropriately. Also, they wanted to look into requiring animal-resistant recycling bins for VHRs.
Question on the recycling thing, because we have now approved the new contract with South Tahoe Refuse. If a unit puts in a bear box, it won't be serviced now, right, as a result of that? So we can't, we could require bear boxes for VHRs like we used to have, but they generally, unless that bear box existed prior to the change over to the bear-resistant cans, South Tahoe Refuse wouldn't service them anyway, correct?
Well, the contract doesn't require them to service new bear boxes, but they have committed that they would, not in this context for VHRs, but generally during the franchise agreement discussions. So I would imagine it would be handled the same way. If we don't change our code and continue requiring a bear box for all VHRs, we would work with them to either amend the franchise agreement or, you know, make sure that they're going to be servicing them.
I would like to actually see that amendment, particularly given the VHR situation here, then that's something that we should probably bring back. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next category, which is permitting and enforcement. We do recommend that consequences for violations be increased. We did adopt a resolution back in late 2023 to increase the fines for citations up to the maximum amount allowed by state law. So that's now 1,500 for a first citation, 3,000 for a second within a year, and 5,000 for a third within the same year. So we can't increase the citation amounts anymore, but there's a couple cleanup things that we can do in the code. There is a provision in the 2018 regulations that states that we won't give a citation to the owner if the owner reports a violation by the tenant. So we can take that out. I think it's appropriate that the owner can be responsible and cited, no matter the circumstances. They are ultimately responsible for making sure they are not violations of their property.
Clarifying question on the citations. Are the first and second citations capped at those amounts, or is it, I thought the cap was $5,000 period, and the third citation is at the maximum, but the first and second are lower amounts?
No, those are the caps under state law.
So the state law specifies the first offense is this much, the second offense is this much, and the third offense, not just the total? Okay, thank you.
The other area that could be tightened up, and this is a recommendation of our police department that the city manager and I agree with, is to clarify that if a property has a VHR permit, you know, that's a privilege to get that permit. That means that property is subject to the operating requirements, whether the property's being rented out short-term or not. So if the owner's using the property, if the owner's cousin's using the property and not paying, so it's not, you know, technically meeting the definition of a short-term rental, the requirements still apply. So that closes a loophole that the police department has found, where they go to, a CSO goes out to cite a property and the person who answers the door says, "Oh, I'm the owner's brother, and we're just here on vacation, and so we're not, this isn't a VHR." So that has been something that comes up sometimes, and we'd like to close that loophole. The seventh item is that we recommend reviewing the VHR permit fees to ensure complete cost recovery, and we've already started working on that. The area, you know, where the fee should be set is going to be somewhat dependent on what council decides to do and what the program looks like, so we can tune that up and bring it back at a future meeting after the decision tonight is made on how to proceed. And then the eighth item, this is one where council can, but doesn't have to, provide permitting preference for prior VHR or QVHR permatees who were in good standing and who did not have their permit renewed due to Measure T. So for the VHR permatees, that would be people who had a permit in 2021 and it was not renewed because of Measure T, and they were in good standing, meaning they did not have more than three citations in a 24-month period, and they currently don't have outstanding citations or transient occupancy tax overdue. And for QVHR permatees, there was only 28 or so issued, but we recently had to void all those permits because of the Measure T ruling. So the people who were in good standing as of 2025 with QVHR permits could be given a permitting preference, and I think what that would look like is just an initial application period where only people in those categories could apply. Again, completely within council's discretion. And then the last three items really are more administrative. Number nine, currently, the 2018 ordinance has VHR permits being issued by Development Services Department. Since Measure T, that has been transferred over to the police department, and we would like to keep that function in the police department so that permitting and enforcement is coming out of the same department. It would just be more efficient. And then the 10th, even with the increased staff that's coming as a request in the next council item, we don't think it would be realistic to issue more than 150 permits per month because of the work to take to, you know, do the inspections and go through the permit application. So we would like to suggest a cap of no more than 150 permits issued per month. And also, that would prevent, you know, an expectation that if we get 1,400 permit applications, they're all going to be issued immediately. And then, you know, if we did issue more than that per month, they're all going to become due for renewal at the same time every year, so it would create a longstanding administrative burden. Final recommendation is that the planning commission be the last stop for administrative appeals of permits, denials, and revocations. So in the past, those planning commission decisions have been then appealable to city council, and we feel that it would be more efficient and cut down on the appeal process to have planning commission be the last stop on that. And we do recognize that this may be a non-all-inclusive list, so there might be other issues the city council wants to consider or discuss, and you're certainly welcome to do that. And with that, I'm available, and also the city manager, if you have any questions.
Question. My understanding is that the ordinance that was in place previously, prior to the passage of Measure T, was a product of community involvement, community input, and, but that with, but that it wasn't, what I'm told is, it wasn't given a chance to work because Measure T became in effect. And I was also told that prior administrations on VHRs, they were basically told not to enforce the rules for vacation rentals. Can you, do you have any insight on either of those comments?
Yes, the ordinance, VHR ordinance underwent a major rewrite, I would say, starting in about 2015, and then through early 2018, there were, I want to say, 15 different city council meetings, stakeholder groups, lots of small amendments, and then a major rewrite in late 2017. So the version of the ordinance that's in the packet is the one that underwent that major rewrite with a lot of stakeholder input. And then there was another minor amendment in August 2018. And then, of course, Measure T passed later that year, so there may be some validity to the criticism that it didn't have the chance to fully get implemented.
Just a quick, a follow-up question, if I may, Mayor. In your judgment, in your professional judgments, had the 2018 ordinance, does that contain sufficient regulatory relief with enforcement, with emphasis on enforcement, to allow vacation rentals to be reauthorized by the city council?
I think cities are capable of enforcing any rules, given they have the resources to do so. So if the community took a long effort to draft that, and if it was managed appropriately and staffed appropriately to enforce it, then it likely would have had less impacts than it maybe did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bass?
Yeah. I'm curious, so just to, for a better understanding of the tourist core, commercial areas compared to the residential zones, and we're in the same ordinance, so the rules that we put in place now, will they go across the tourist core as well as the residential zones if they're in the same ordinance, or how are we going to, how do we break that apart?
No, all of, well, all of the changes that are being suggested and recommended would be outside the tourist core.
Okay, so it basically will say that in the ordinance so that there's two splits. And I'm curious, do you know with the hosting platforms, if we're able to kind of differentiate even with like a message to somebody that's renting that says, "Hey, these are in a residential area, and you're going to have heavy restrictions on you because you're in this residential zone, and we also have these other, you know, VHRs that are in a tourist core that don't have the restrictions." I just think that it could help try to send the people that may have a family into a residential zone, and then somebody that's maybe coming up with a group of friends closer to the casino where they're not going to have the same restrictions. I'm just wondering if we can require that of the hosting platform.
I'm not sure the hosting platforms would be the most effective place to get that message across, but it might be something that could be put in the, you know, if we have a agreement that needs to be signed, like a rental agreement, we could require language in there between the owner and the renters.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jink, I'm sorry, Mr. Robbins and Mr. Roberts, do you have any questions?
I may have more questions later.
Okay. I do have a question then. With regards to defensible space requirements, are there, is there anything in the code that says, is there anything in the current code? I didn't find it, but I wanted to make sure.
In the VHR ordinance, there is not any defensible space requirement, but I will say, recently, we adopted one of the most stringent defensible space ordinances in the state, which would apply to VHRs as well. It applies when properties are sold.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all of your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now comes the fun part. I'm opening it up to public comment, and on this item, if, please come.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Peterson. I'm the president of the Tahoe Keys Property Owners Association. Our board has not digested this yet. We plan to, this is on our agenda for tomorrow, so I don't have any kind of a position or statement for you today on behalf of the board. So tonight, I'm just here as an individual, as a homeowner. So my comments are just as a homeowner. I want to commend staff, the 11 items I think are, they cover the things that would come to my mind. The hot button for me is number three. That's the density issue, and I think we need to think of it in two ways. One is not to overburden a region. For instance, Tahoe Keys has about 1,500 properties, and in the past, we had over 300 of the permits, which is like 20% versus, we should have had, if it were even citywide, we would have had 10%. So we were like double density. So density in term of regional density, but also in terms of linear density. You know, I think staff mentioned X number of feet between VHRs, just so, in the past, I could stand on my roof and throw a rock and hit five of them. Our street was inundated with VHRs, and that encourages big parties that can rent, you know, adjacent houses and have a, you know, a big wedding party, and it ends up being very disruptive. So if you could change the rules, or the previous ordinance did not address this at all, but spread them out a little bit, that would be very helpful. And I won't talk to the other 11 items, just item three, it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Is there anyone else? I know there is. Mr. Messina.
Hi there, John Messina. First, I would like to applaud Dwayne Wallace's and Dave Jenkins' comments. However, I believe that the city should be making amends with the 1,400 permit holders that lost their income for the last five years, instead of worrying about how much money we're going to make. Those advocating delays in the reinstatement of permits to change rules or to raise fees are ignoring the fact that we can make those changes after issuing the permits in an orderly process. The farmer city, farmer city council, now, not this one, enacted and defended the unconstitutional ordinance that cost the permit holders in the city across an income of over $70 million in the past five years because they implemented the ordinance before legal issues were settled. The city should not add insult to injury by delaying restoring the permits for any reason. And we're constantly reminded, ordinance 1114 has done a wonderful job in correcting the existing permit problems. And the people who lost their permits were not violating the rules. There was no other reason for them to lose their permits. If they were breaking the rules, yeah, okay, we may want to do something there, but they weren't. And also, the claim that the city would be overwhelmed with reissuing permits is more disinformation from opponents. The truth is, there will initially be less than 784 new permits right away, not 1,400, because 616 of the former permitted VHRs were sold, and it will not, it will take time for those to acquire and prepare new facilities if they wish to renew their permits. Restoring their original anniversary dates and prorating the fees would allow all the permits to be restored immediately without having them renew on the same date, because they'd be renewing on the same dates they were before. The city should be doing all it can to mend the division and damage to our city that was caused by the perpetrators of this Measure T, not perpetuating it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Good evening and Happy Earth Day. My name is Heidi Sandborn. My husband and I bought our second home here off El Tahoe 10 years ago in June. We absolutely love it here. We love this community, and we love this lake. And it was really hard to afford the second home when we lost our permit, and it was not due to anything we did. We actually took a house that had all kinds of problems and maintenance problems. We did the TIRPA stuff. We did the fireproofing. We took down trees. We did everything we could do to be good neighbors. We gave all of our neighbors our cards. We had no complaints. We had no violations, and we paid our taxes on time, and we still lost our permit. So we've been holding on because we want to, you know, we love it here, and we want to spend as much time as we can here, but when that house sits vacant, there's not people in the restaurants. There's not taxes being paid to the city. There's nobody going skiing. Some of us know how to manage our own properties, and we're good at it. And we were penalized. So all I would ask is that we get our permits back as quickly as possible so we can start renting to these good people that we have vetted very thoroughly. I have a camera in our garage. I can see all the way down to the street. I can see the coyotes sleeping in the carport and warn them that not bring their little dog outside yet. We are, we know exactly who's there, how many cars, and the noise won't happen when you have good tenants and you've got the right amount of people in the house and you've been very clear about the rules. So all I'd say is, please give us our permit back. We've done the right things. Some of us really love this area and want to maintain it, work hard to maintain it. We got the bear box. We did all the things. So we just want to get our permit back, and we'd appreciate that in a timely manner. The only thing I'd say is, please don't make us get a local person. We can be up the hill in an hour and a half, but like I said, I can see in that camera exactly who's in that house. So we don't need a noise machine. Everybody has a decibel meter on their phone. It's a simple app, you can easily, but what the city manager said is right. The previous stuff was not enforced. I called on my neighbor's VHR, and nobody came out. There was a woman screaming on the deck at 2:00 in the morning, and no police came. I couldn't sleep. So, I mean, we have to enforce the rules. You have to give the resources to the city manager in order to enforce it. But if we do this right, this will work, and the city will be better off for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandborn. Mr. Sharma?
Dear Mayor and city council members, my name is Deepak Sharma. My family owns and operates six lodging properties in South Lake Tahoe. We are in process of developing some land parcel in commercial town center areas of the city. I'm also a board member of South Lake Tahoe Lodging Association. So I'm here to speak about future ordinance with regards to VHRs, and my focus is commercial areas. I sent you an email with details about my concerns regarding restrictions or caps on VHRs in commercially zoned parcels. We've gone through interesting times with respect to VHRs. They were allowed with restrictions in residential areas, then came Measure T that banned them in residential areas. Now, after Measure T is no longer valid, we are about to discuss an ordinance for VHRs. That's why we're here. All this time, there was never a question on any restrictions of VHRs in commercial zone along Highway 50 and Highway 89. Commercial zoned parcels along Highway 50 and Highway 89 either have some Commercial zoned parcels along Highway 50 and Highway 89 either have some sort of lodging property on them, lodging property being a hotel. They might not be big hotels, but they're hotels. Or the other parcels that are there, they're allowed, you're allowed to build a hotel there. If there is a shopping complex, the zoning allows a hotel to be built there. So any type of hotel, it can be a timeshare, bed and breakfast, it could be a condo hotel. As the market changes, we, who are in the legal lodging business, we need to change, and we have to adjust, you know, to the, to the demands. In our Tahoe market, there is a demand for full ownership condos that can be used as VHRs. If it was any other market, we wouldn't be discussing. If there is a parcel zone, you know, for hotel, there will be a hotel built. However, here, there is a demand that is good enough for a chunk of residential communities to become, you know, houses to become VHRs. Now, what is appropriate in residential areas and what caps, restrictions are appropriate in residential areas is a very different topic. I'm not going to go there. My concern is commercial zoned parcel. Parcel where a hotel can be built, any type of hotel, then how can there be a restriction of having a VHR there? It's just another type of hotel. Okay? The market, you know, so dictates that, you know, a condo, full ownership condo become VHR is more appropriate in that parcel, then developers should be allowed to do that. Essentially, it's a choice between regular hotel, timeshare, condo hotel, or a condo used as a VHR on that parcel. Should there be any restriction on that commercial parcel? Well, the common sense says, no. It's just a hotel. You know, the market has evolved, technology has evolved, you know, there was a time of some other type of hotel. There were a bunch of motels built. There is no motel built right now. We have to address the market. And if it makes sense for a developer to build a condo and let it be used as a VHR, then what better place to do it than in a commercial zoned area? I request you to please remove any restrictions on commercial zoned areas.
Thank you, Mr. Sharma. Please come forward.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Matt Bettencourt, and I'm proud to be part of the South Lake Tahoe community. Sorry, I'm not a talker, I had to write this down. The court found Measure T to be unconstitutional because it was unfair and discriminatory. And I'm concerned that a lot of these recommendations follow those same things. The beginning of this meeting started off with about inclusion, and before this meeting started, we had an awesome moment of inclusion. And I think that's a big thing to remember for what's coming up with this VHR issue. So I think it's, placing a cap limit on VHRs in residential areas unfairly restricts citizens from using their property. All citizens, regardless of their class, color, creed, or address, should be able to use identically zoned properties in the same way under the law. Requiring a local property manager will not change people's behaviors during their vacations. The VHR user needs to know the laws in advance. This can be done equally well by the property owner as by a property manager. No property manager is anywhere near as invested in their house as the actual owner of a VHR home. Despite my concerns about the fairness and equity of many of these recommendations, I believe that the staff found and gave the correct recommendation, which will have a positive effect for the entire city. And that recommendation is to increase the consequences for the violations and to enforce them more. The city has a sworn police department. The city has a code enforcement division. The city can balance the VHR issue by empowering and encouraging city employees to hold lawbreakers accountable and can levy fines and punishments to help stop poor behavior. Please don't blatantly restrict and punish all of your citizens because it's easier than enforcing the city's laws. The Lake Tahoe Basin is a world-renowned natural wonder. South Lake Tahoe is and always will be a tourist destination. It's never going to get around that. No city restrictions will ever change that. That's the wrong page. What new city restrictions on VHRs will do is eliminate the ability for middle-class families to have homes in South Lake Tahoe, both vacation homes and permanent homes. The restriction of a homeowner's ability to use their property to help pay for expenses will force the sale of homes, and the people who are going to buy these homes are going to be really, really rich people. They're not going to be middle-class families. They're going to be rich people who can afford to have a second house without relying on rental income to make their mortgage. The area is too beautiful, and the real estate here is too lucrative for that not to happen. Lastly, the city's restrictions will also take away the ability for middle-class families to create a generational appreciation for the Tahoe area, and will eliminate middle-class families from teaching our children how important it is to preserve the lake and the surrounding areas for future generations. Measure T and other restrictions have already started the ball rolling into turning South Lake Tahoe into places like Lake Champlain, Aspen, and Hilton Head, beautiful vacation destinations that only the extremely wealthy can afford to visit. South Lake Tahoe will always have a high percentage of houses that are vacation homes. It's better for the entire community if those vacation homes are owned by a middle-class family who have a vested interest in the South Lake Tahoe community. I'm a firefighter, and my wife's a teacher. We accounted on using our home to generate money to help us pay bills for our family. Please don't take away our ability to do that. Please treat all your citizens equally, and don't allow one homeowner an opportunity that you denied others because of where they live, when they applied for a permit, or who their grandparents were. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward. I'm sorry, this gentleman back here. And then, Mr. Salmon, you come up next.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yuraya Kaufman. I've been here in South Lake Tahoe for 10 years, and I love this town. I definitely appreciate what the guy before me said. And I implore the city to consider the inclusion of multifamily residences into the VHR permitting process. Duplexes and multifamily residences have been unfairly excluded from VHR permits in South Lake Tahoe for what appears to me to be no apparent reason. I bought a small duplex here in 2018 that I worked very hard for. It was rundown and borderline unfit for renters when I purchased it, and I have been slowly fixing it up since then. The ability to rent one of my units as an Airbnb would allow me to continue fixing up the property while also providing an affordable rental for myself or a local. I understand the need for affordable rentals and the need for homeowners to be able to provide quality rentals at reasonable prices. Airbaying being a unit on your property provides a huge opportunity to fix up your property, to get ahead, to care for family, to infuse money into your community, and much more. I don't think that huge apartment complexes should turn into Airbnbs, but I believe that multifamily homes should be allowed into the VHR permitting process, as single-family homes are, to provide a fair playing field for locals. Beyond that, addressing another issue that was mentioned earlier, in-person check-ins wouldn't work well for most Airbnbs, in my opinion. Guests arrive at all different times of day, sometimes at 11:00 a.m., sometimes at midnight. Changing road conditions and plans change these times, so requiring an in-person check-in wouldn't work in real life, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Salmon, and then we'll start, it looks like you guys are lining up over here, so.
Mayor Wallace, council members. My name is Mark Salmon. I'm here today not just as a VHR advocate, but as a longtime member of this community, someone who's served on local boards and understands how emotional policy can cloud what should be simple, fact-based governance. Let's be clear, this city has scarcely supported those of us who approve of short-term rentals. When Measure T passed by a razor-thin margin, no one from the city reached out to find a balanced solution or compromise. Instead, T was implemented without hesitation and defended at great cost for six years in court, first on substance, which failed, and then months were spent on supposed technicalities. The city fought tooth and nail to say the plaintiffs didn't even have standing or the right to sue, which speaks volumes towards the passion in their position. And now the courts have spoken. Instead of embracing that decision and moving forward, you're turning again not towards balance, but towards appeasing the vocal minority. I say minority because only locals could vote on Measure T. That means that someone who had only been renting for just a few months had a voice, while a family who owned property here for generations did not. Second homeowners, people who have invested in this town, maintained their properties, supported local businesses, and paid millions in TOT and property taxes, had no vote. Now, instead of implementing a return to a fair, proven system, we're facing a tangled mess of proposed amendments that lack data, logic, and legality. The pre-Measure T ordinance was the product of years of community input, study, and compromise. It worked. It established clear rules, robust enforcement, and was one of the scarce, strictest, and most responsible VHR ordinances in the country. From 2017 to 2021, complaints dropped, compliance rose, and enforcement proved effective when applied. And the data backs this up. Enforcement, not excessive regulation, was the key and will always be. This isn't about whether we should have VHRs. That question is settled. This real issue, whether, is whether we're going to now govern using facts or emotion. Here are the facts. Measure T cost the city 3 to 5 million per year in lost tax revenue. 70-plus businesses have closed, and hundreds of jobs were lost. Affordable housing only worsened. Tourist destinations like Truckee saw TOT growth up 275%, while we stagnated. This isn't a VHR problem, it's an enforcement problem. Don't punish an entire industry or the property owners who followed the rules for the actions of a few. And please don't drag this city into another legal pickle by passing laws that, again, I promise you, will be challenged and likely overturned, or even face a court order. My asks are simple. Implement the existing ordinance promptly and with consistency. Make the process predictable. Quickly reassure, reissue permits to passholders. Reduce legal exposure. Enforce, enforce, enforce. Thank you.
My name's Tom Spencer. I'm a resident here in the city of South Lake Tahoe. I have some written comments that I'll read from, and then I'll give a copy to the city clerk when I'm done. I'm here to address the council and to speak on behalf of restoring VHRs, starting with reexamining the 2018 ordinance. Much has already been said about the value to the city of restoring VHR business. If the council decides to move forward with a reinvigorated ordinance, the following behavioral thoughts should be considered. Assured enforcement. Have we heard that a few times tonight? Supporters of Measure T had some legitimate complaints. Quick response from CSOs 24/7. Strong penalty assessments. Permit revocation for multiple violations. The annual VHR permit renewal fee should be sufficient to cover all VHR program administrative costs, including 24/7 enforcement and the appeals process. The TOT revenue should be available to the City of South Lake Tahoe General Fund for other high priority needs. The council should also address making the behavioral rules applicable to full-time rentals and full-time residents. Where we live, there were five to six VHRs within 200 yards, two of which were problematic. There were also two problematic residences occupied full-time. So this is a, something that's got to be spread across the boards. It can't just be targeted at VHRs. There's troublemakers that live right next door. There are thousands of well-behaved potential VHR clients out there. VHR owners and rental companies should require a security or compliant complaint deposit, which could then be held until determined that there was no damage or behavioral violations occurring. You do not need to market for clients who are prone to exhibit unrespectful behavior in neighborhood situations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Nicole. I'm a, go ahead. I'm Nicole Ladd. Thank you for allowing us the chance to speak. I own a very small local VHR company, which I started last year with my business partner, Jagger Graham. He was born and raised here. I've been here over a decade. So, you know, mostly our homes are in the county, so, you know, obviously, there's that. I understand that there are many amendments to the 2018 ordinance, but my question to you all is why? The ordinance as it stands is a well-thought-out ordinance that it took previous council members many years to compile. The only issue with the current ordinance is that we didn't give it enough time, as previous people have said. Time for guests to get the message, time for local managers to comply, and time for enforcement to work. So let's reinstate the current ordinance, and if needed, reevaluate any needed changes down the road after we've seen what the current, current ordinance can do. This will allow millions in TOT funds, TOT revenue to flow back into the city, allow cleaners and other locals to be rehired, and allow local businesses to thrive. Another thing I want to emphasize is that, in my opinion, clustering and buffers did not work in Eldorado County and should not be considered as an amendment to the ordinance. Clustering really did nothing for the problem VHR homes that were grandfathered in. All it did is push them all out into various neighborhoods, so instead of maybe two or three being in one, now everybody gets a piece of the pie and everybody gets to live next to one of the problem VHRs I'm referring to, not VHRs in general. You know, there's a lot of local companies and even self-managing owners that, that run a tight ship. We don't manage a ton of homes, and we, we do care just as much as the owners, and we don't have problem VHRs, so. It also has been shown to decrease home values for not only second homeowners, but locals that own a home, so, in clustered neighborhoods. So all in all, I just really want to emphasize that is not a good route to take. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Roberson?
Honorable Mayor, council members, and staff. I'm Stu Roberson, and I stand before you to urge the swift approval and implementation of a renewed vacation home rental program. First, let's address the history. It's crucial to remember that Measure T did not arise from a failure of the city. It didn't arise because the leaders failed the city, or it wasn't a bad ordinance. It arose because after coming up with a strict ordinance, there was a small faction that said, "This is not enough," and they took it to the voters. In fact, they started collecting signatures before the new ordinance was even implemented. And I see a shaking head, but you know it's true. You weren't living here.
Yes, I was.
The strictest VHR ordinance was enacted and approved in 2017. We now have this new ordinance that was working. The reason it worked is because the city did provide six full-time enforcement officers, CSOs. They were fully hired by August of 2018. And we saw citations go down, we saw complaints go down, and we saw real enforcement. It wasn't because the ordinance was just strict, it's because we followed up on it, and many thanks to the staff that did that. The city has now lost over 3 million in TOT annually. At today's dollars, that's about 7 million. And I want you to know, and this is an amazing number, for every hundred units that you consider today, to increase the cap or decrease, that's a swing in 600,000 to 900,000 in the budget that could be applied to our roads, to fire and public safety, to public transit, and yes, even affordable housing. Of course, affordable housing did not approve, improve, when Measure T went into effect. Now, times of the essence, we're rapidly approaching our summer season, which is so valuable for our small businesses. If you could vote today to put forward an ordinance that you review for a first reading at your next council meeting, you will be doing this community a world of benefit. There will be new jobs, there'll be help for our small businesses that rely on tourism. This is about supporting our local economy with a balanced approach, serving the best interests of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberson. Ms. Stillian?
I remember.
I did. Please come.
Thank you. Hi. It's interesting, all these people being so supportive of getting rid of Measure T. I voted for it, and my name is Janice Stillians. I don't like being here at all. But let's talk about why the management of these VHRs didn't work. And where I live, I live in a small area called Bijou Pines. It's a circle with streets going like tic-tac-toe across it. And right now, I do, on my block, have seven VHRs that are working just fine, did have 10 at one point. This is a very small neighborhood that has old cabins in it. The two- and three-bedroom ones worked out pretty good, but it was Kevin Fabino that suggested that the larger ones be rented out. I had two across the street that would have at times 40 people in them. And children are not considered people, just so you know. I experienced many cars, cars slamming, day and night, people coming and going. And mind you, they came and went three times a week. We had fast cars. The cleaning crews were lethal. They would just about run you over because you were in a hurry to get to these places. Loud hot tubs. This is a very small area. Large, you know, large, noisy hot tubs with everybody in their cell phones, lots of music, and lots of yelling. Barking, howling, dogs locked in houses, tied up outside, and the sun with no water. We had a lot of open fires out, and logs, and Weber barbecues, and old barbecues, which we would have to go over and hex people. we would have to go over and ask people to put it out. We had hookers in limos. We had people who wanted to feed the bears. We had fireworks in the middle of the night. And when we tried to call to make a complaint, a lot of the times, we would get hooked up with Utah. They had no idea would be...yeah, Utah. So we would go to the re-permitting thing, and the problem was, people did not get citated. So when we would go, we were disregarded, the locals, because we complained, but if they had no citations, they got remitted their permits. It was a nightmare. I have lived in that neighborhood for 43 years, and I have now lots of cars, lots of people, lots of dogs. And the renters telling you, the rental agencies saying how great everything was, they were the worst. They did not take care of their houses. It was the single-family people that had their little places that would rent out. They actually were considerate. And no one in our neighborhood is from Tahoe that owns these rentals. So why would they care? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stillian.
You're welcome.
Please come. Sometimes I think my kids aren't people, so I sort of agree with that. Sorry.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Pagan. I'm a homeowner here in South Lake Tahoe. I'm here today, like many of us, to express my strong support for reinstating the right for homeowners like myself to rent out our properties as vacation home rentals. I previously had a permit to rent my home. However, Measure T passed...excuse me, when Measure T passed, that permit and my ability to responsibly rent my property was taken away. I was greatly relieved when Measure T was overturned, and the city decided not to appeal. I urge the city to reinstate permits for those of us who held them and that were in good standing prior to Measure T, given we meet the requirements and also given priority during the application process, as previously considered. We complied with regulations, paid the required fees, and contributed to the local economy. Taking that away retroactively was not only unfair, it was a breach of trust. I ask that there be communication with prior permit holders like myself prior to the acceptance of applications so that we can have time to prepare and act accordingly. The impact of Measure T was far-reaching, even beyond homeowners. After the recent ruling, three people who used to work with myself and my family, local families who helped us clean, maintain our home, provide snow removal, et cetera, personally reached out to me immediately with sincere excitement for the overturning of Measure T. I think that's important here for, you know, considering the local community as a whole. We are just one home, yet our ability to rent out that home affected at least those three families, as stated. If you multiply that across the community, the ripple effect is significant. I also believe restrictions that limit vacation home rentals to certain neighborhoods or impose arbitrary buffer zones between these rental homes are misguided. These types of limitations don't improve safety or protect neighborhoods, they simply reduce opportunity. There's no evidence showing that having one vacation rental home near another causes harm. Responsible renting comes down to how the home is managed, not where it is. If there's a vacation rental that is not adhering to the standards of the city and the community, it will weed itself out accordingly, using the citation process and the three-strikes law, if you will. Which brings me to another concern. The proposed requirement that homeowners must use a property manager, I believe this would be a mistake. As an owner, I am deeply invested in who stays in my home, how they treat it, and how they interact with the community. Property managers often do not have the same vested interest. Speed it up here. Lastly, I ask that the city strongly consider the dollar amount of the fees associated with the application, expansion, renewals, and citations. They place a huge burden on homeowners who have already endured four years of financial loss, confusion, and shifting regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is William Liu. I'd like to present a more sensible and nuanced ordinance. Caps are arbitrary. The housing stock grows each year. Therefore, consider adopting an ordinance that allocates a percentage of permits per neighborhood. Buffers are also arbitrary. For example, two one-bedroom cabins next to each other are dramatically different from two 10-bedroom mansions next to each other. In addition, there should be tiers, with more permits allowed for smaller houses and less for larger houses. For example, Tier One, studio to two bedrooms; Tier Two, three to four bedrooms; Tier Three, five bedrooms and up. There should be a percentage also allocated to each tier. For multifamily, I also advocate for a percentage of units per complex should be allowed. And lastly, any complaints can only be filed online with a valid ID. There should be a No Cry Wolf clause in the proposed ordinance whereby any neighbors who file numerous complaints should be dismissed if the complaints are unfounded. This prevents VHRs from being unfairly targeted. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Hare.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly O'Hare. I've lived here more than 20 years, and I'm really worried about this. Nothing has really affected our life more than living next to a vacation rental home. I've lived in three different places. Our second home was in Tahoe Tirol. Those homes are two to four bedrooms. The house next door to me advertised it slept 20 people. There's no street parking there. I came home to two vans in my carport one night that were backed in, and I assumed that somebody was burglarizing the house. I did call the police department, but it turned out to be two vans that were parked there servicing another vacation rental in the neighborhood. They stayed there all night. They took them out early in the morning. But the problem with that is that's a private property tow. It would have cost me $500 to tow those vans out of my own carport. And so there needs to be something, some way to deal with that kind of a problem. Some of the other big issues I had there was, there was a wedding reception in the carport next door to me with, complete with a DJ, regularly using my bare bins as trash because they didn't have one. You would think that the HOA would deal with this. We tried for years. Eventually, I sold that house at a huge loss and moved. I just couldn't live next door to it anymore. It doesn't stop the problem. I did move up the street with less density. There were homes with regular vacation rentals, seven or eight cars parked across the front lawns, way overpopulated. They did have someone to call. This was in around 2015 to 18. There was someone to call posted. You'd call the phone number, nobody would answer. Called the police department. Either they didn't come, the CSO wasn't working, or...this is the one I want to stop in the future. The police chief told me at the time, it was a different police chief, that they had a policy that the CSO had to witness the violation. And so if you had photographs or videos, they would not write a citation. There is no other law, no misdemeanor or felony, that requires a verification by a police officer or a CSO. So I want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I assume you're going to reinstate the law, the vacation rental law. So I have some suggestions requiring the bear boxes, although I looked at the old ordinance, and it says nothing about size. So if they have a small one that doesn't fit all the trash, it doesn't quite work. And I'm saying that because the house next to me left bags and bags of trash that the bears would strew across the rooms. Limit the occupancy to the legal number of bedrooms rather than occupants, number of occupants. And, you know, and then, most importantly, I think you need to spend the money on this program. There are already groups trying to vie for this money of how it should be spent. Lots of special interest groups want this to go to affordable housing and other things. But I think, number one, the priority has to be enforcement, and that the CSOs or whoever enforces this has to be...they have to be available at night to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hare.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Steve DeShara, on behalf of Tahoe Chamber. A lot of important things have been said tonight, and this...there's so many opportunities to go down a rabbit hole. I think the most important thing for all of us to remember is what the city manager started us out on. The city staff is the one that has to carry this out day in and day out. And so you have a lot of policy choices, and I appreciate the fact that the city attorney gave you lots of choices, but there are a lot of rabbit holes in those choices. So let's keep it pretty simple. Let's focus on enforcement, you know, the 24/7, the CSOs. We support the idea of transitioning this to the police department. And avoid excessive regulations, because that just doesn't do much. Measure T gave visitors in this community and other communities around the region a very bad reputation, and they shouldn't have that. And the people who can responsibly rent their homes to responsible people should have that opportunity. So please avoid rabbit holes, one of which, I think, and we think, is clustering, because that's like saying, "I don't want to take math, I want to go right to trigonometry." Okay? There's winners and losers when you start clustering. Now, if you wanted to reduce the number of VHRs overall, that's one thing. But clustering really is a very scientific process that I don't think we really have time to get into right now. You should definitely have the program be cost-recovery oriented. So everything that the city manager and the city staff say we need from the council to appropriately enforce this program, without getting into a lot of sophisticated things that really hurt the brain, that's what the city council should give the staff, like the city manager said in the beginning. We are concerned about the planning commission being the place where people go to appeal. If the city council sets the policy, then you should be the ones to hear the appeal. Or the alternative would be to set up a separate VHR advisory board that hears appeals. That's been done in Douglas County, and it's actually worked pretty well. But you set the policy, you should hear people who have concerns. So we approve going forward as expeditiously as possible. There are ordinance rules. You have to have a first reading and a second reading. We certainly support the idea of the people who got cut off, even though they had permits in good standing, should be the priority for returning permits, and they should be metered out in a way that the city staff could properly manage. So we appreciate the tough choices before you. Don't overthink this. Go forward with what you know in your heart is right, and treat the people who have treated you correctly in the right way. And I think that'll be putting us off on a good foot forward. Thank you.
Perfect timing, Mr. DeShara. Mr. Fry? Oh, Mr. Wallace. Cut the line.
Sorry it took me so long to get up here. I thought I had arthritis, but I got good news from the doctors, just early onset, rigor mortis. So...
Not dad jokes, it's bad jokes.
Yeah, I know. Dwayne Wallace, CEO of South Tahoe Chamber of Commerce. Our chamber agrees with Mr. DeShara's chamber. That's a lot...that's about, I don't know, between us, we probably represent 2,000 businesses. And our businesses are inundating us with the fact that they're having a hard time making a living. You'd think, gosh, there's people coming here. But with the expenses that have gone up and the tremendous flood of problems from Measure T, about 70 businesses have gone out. Mr. Roberson really said what I wanted to say, and so did Mr. Salmon, and so did Mr. DeShara. So I want to talk about a couple of other issues than from what the letter I had. If you go to clustering, the problem is, is people like this lady here and some of the others that spoke, through no fault of their own, might be eliminated from being a VHR owner just because somebody else down the street got a permit before they did and they're within 300 feet or 100 feet. It's hard math to do it that way, and it doesn't make sense. That being said, there are people who need and deserve to enjoy the quiet enjoyment of their property. So how do you balance that? We believe that Ordinance 1114 was doing it. All the evidence and the complaints show it. I mean, there's one guy that complained 35 times when somebody would, you know, their kids would go out in the front yard, he'd call, or a car pulled up, he'd call. So that skewed the results a little bit, but on the bottom line is, nobody really had that much of a problem with it. So what we recommend is what people taught me years ago, and that's simple, predictable, consistent, and fair. Simple is the issue of enforcement. We recommend you do that. Consistent is clustering and limiting neighborhoods is anything but consistent. People won't understand it. It's too hard to figure out, and it creates winners and losers when they've done nothing wrong. We believe that Ordinance 1114 worked. We believe you should reenact it and take a look at it later to see if the facts support doing anything else. That being said, some of the staff recommendations are good. I think they should be considered. But if we want to put money into our recreation complex, if we want to fix our roads, if we want to clean up lots, if we want to do transportation, we have to have the money to do it. And right now, the city budget is starting to lean the wrong way, and just like all those businesses, that needs to be fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Madam Wallace, and honorable council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Caleb Fry. I'm a local homeowner and employer. Between 2016 and 2018, the city made meaningful progress on VHRs through public workshops, socioeconomic impact studies, balanced ordinances, and strong enforcement, and the data showed it was working. The Yes on T campaign disregarded this effort, pushing a flawed measure with fear tactics and false promises. That narrow vote did not and does not reflect the will of the people. To be clear, South Lake Tahoe is not a suburb. It's an international destination with inherently transient neighborhoods. Tourism is our economy. VHRs are essential and irreplaceable, and data suggests the same. The South Lake Tahoe Economic Travel Impact Study estimates in 2018, VHRs accounted for nearly one-quarter of all visitor spending, $100 million annually, including $5 million per year to city TOT. In Big Bear Lake, reducing 1,000 VHR permits was projected to cut visitor volume by 47% and slash $250 million in annual spending. In Coachella Valley, bands were projected to cost $375 million a year in spending. Some claim VHRs are destroying neighborhood character, but in 2019, 85% had zero complaints. 95% had no violations. Just 17 VHRs accounted for over one-third of all complaints, most of which stemmed from poor management or chronic complainers. That's an enforcement issue, not a systemic one. Other claims VHRs drive up housing and push families out of town. Countless research studies disagree. After Measure T, rent prices rose 50% or more. 1,400 VHRs make up just 10% of the city's housing stock, most of which would never be available as affordable long-term rentals. VHRs are not the cause of a housing crisis, but they are a lifeline for local businesses and workers who depend on the economic activity they generate. Let's stop pretending the anti-VHR rhetoric is about affordability or community. No amount of compromise will satisfy this minority, and continuing to try will inflict further harm on our community. Baseless ordinance revisions don't solve VHR problems. Sharp program management and targeted enforcement does. It's the only thing that does. I urge council to reinstate the prior ordinance and restore this critical economic driver for our small businesses and workers, and regain millions of dollars a year in city revenue to provide meaningful support for the city services and programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Please come up.
Good evening, Madam Wallace, members of the council. My name is Francesca Baling, and I am a local resident here in South Lake Tahoe. I'm excited to hear what amendments you discuss this evening, but I'm mostly here to encourage you to seek community feedback before making any final decisions. As Ms. Stroud pointed out, I understand the original ordinance in 2017 did seek a lot of community feedback while it was being drafted, but it has been seven years since that ordinance was written. Our community has changed a significant amount since then. Our community needs have changed a significant amount since then, and I think it would only be fair, in the spirit of accessibility and inclusion, to allow those folks to speak about their needs as well as we're changing this VHR ordinance. I am lucky enough to be here to speak tonight and have my voice heard. These folks are lucky enough, but this is only a very small subset of our community. It doesn't include folks who are working, who are in class, who are at their kids' soccer... soccer games or swim meets. I think it would be really helpful to understand how our community needs this VHR ordinance to be amended, and I would encourage you to solicit that feedback, whether through workshops or surveys or whatever means we can, to understand what we need to change before finalizing this new ordinance. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Baling.
Oh, can I add one thing?
Yes, you have plenty of time.
Perfect. I would also like to ask, I understand scooters are on the agenda later, and I will not talk about them now, but I wonder if, why we can make requirements of Lime and Bird. We cannot make similar requirements of Airbnb, as Mr. Bass suggested. And that's my time. Thank you so much.
If we can make requirements of Lime and Bird, scooter companies, why can't we make similar requirements of Airbnb?
Airbnb, yeah. Mr. Moser?
Hey, Moser, South Lake Tahoe. As Yogi Berra would say, it's déjà vu all over again. Yeah, there are currently 559 permits in the tourist corps, 596 currently permitted. And there's probably about, by some estimates and people that know, approximately 200 or so that have been operating illegally all along here. So I've stood here twice and mentioned that every one in my neighborhood that was permitted and several that never were permitted have been operating all this time. So complaining does no good when you don't have enforcement or the will to enforce. El Dorado County requiring a buffer of 500 feet, you should have at least 300 feet because it does matter if you have two next to each other or four across the street from each other. Proliferation is a big part of the problem. Also, multifamily, none should be allowed, never was originally in 2003 and for some years before realtors and property management people and people with multifamily decided to get their foot in the door there and allow. I'd also like to point out that Mr. Jenkins here, since he's leaving, I'll jump ahead.
He's just grabbing water, Mr. Moser. He's still listening.
Yeah, I mean, he objected to one cell tower going into a residential neighborhood, and now he's, you know, voting for to allow, you know, 1,000 to 1,200 or more VHRs to go into the neighborhoods. So, so much for good government. Yeah, like I said, no duplexes or even if there's two places on, separate houses on the same property. As far as local contact number or requiring a local property manager, I would void that. Let the people do it themselves if they choose. If there's the problem, the police or CSOs can go to the property and give a citation or solve the problem. Just having, you know, a property manager show up a half hour later or something or calling on the phone doesn't really matter. It's between the people renting the house and law enforcement. So this is all about realtors and property management for a large part making millions of dollars in fees. I would like to know, where in Lake to Save Lake Tahoe, Prosperity Center, TRPA, or where they're always arguing about increases in VMT, or they should be arguing about the vast increase in VMTs that this creates. And therefore, I think an environmental impact statement for housing and VMTs really should be required for this. A second home is a luxury. It means you've created enough wealth, or inherited it, if you're lucky, to afford a second home. If you can't afford it, sell it. You shouldn't have to ruin a neighborhood just so that you can pay for your second home. That's probably it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser.
Mayor, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Moser for leaving. I had to get a drink of water.
Mr. May?
Good evening. Dan May for the record. I'd mostly just want to make a call for public workshops. I am very aware of how much work went into it a decade ago, and I value that a lot, but there's a couple of things that are true. One, as was pointed out, that was seven years ago, and things are not the same as they were seven years ago. But secondly, we know that more than half of the voters voted for Measure T. Some of them were well aware of what was going on with the ordinance and did not think that was sufficient to address the problems. For those people, providing another opportunity for their voice to be heard in the public will help make everyone either see things the same way or find a different compromise from where things are. And if they were not aware of everything going on back in 2015 to 2018, then this is their opportunity to learn, and I want to see more people involved. So either way, it's going to be better. And not only that, we've heard from a number of people today that are in support of VHRs who had different opinions on how it should be done. So I think that provides another opportunity for people to talk this out. So basically, what I'm trying to say here is, I want to see people, we know that there are people that are not okay with going forward with things as is. I want them to get an opportunity to have their voices heard, even if we end up in exactly the same place. Because to all the people that want to rush as quickly as possible to start making money with their vacation rentals again, I hear you and I understand what the urgency is. You've been held back for a long time. It doesn't feel fair. But the reality is, what we learned from the court decisions is that it's entirely constitutional. It's entirely constitutional to prohibit vacation rentals in residential areas. The problem was the carve-out for locals. So as much as all of the vacation home rental owners would like to start resuming business again, I can tell you the last thing any of them want is to see this, something similar to Measure T, back on a ballot initiative again. So what I would say is, as much as we can be in a rush, let's take our time, let's make sure people are being heard, and let's find our compromises. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Spiel?
Hello, everyone. This is Nick Spiel. It's going to be tough to top how Dan and Francesca put it, but I would also like to make an appeal for public input. And I'll go a little off topic, but I promise I'll bring it back. I wanted to congratulate the Development Services Department on the work that they've been doing on the Midtown Area Plan update that's in progress right now. I've been to about half a dozen public workshops, some hosted on Zoom, some at the Rec Center, the Senior Center, stakeholder meetings with different people in the community. Because a big update like an area plan update affects a lot of people in the community, and it's important to incorporate all that input into changes to our city policy. I love the, there's a lot of ideas that we saw here on the board. I love the format also. I'm looking forward to seeing your conversation around that. That's the type of question that I wish we would ask the community, right? Put up poster boards around and try and see which, where is their consensus and how can we find common ground? Because going back to another citizens' ballot initiative is not the best way forward. So I hope you'll consider that. I don't think I even have time to give my input on which of those 11 ideas are some of the best ones, but I do hope that you will seek public input and act to try to preserve our housing stock, prevent displacement, and move forward in a sustainable way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiel. Ms. Gresh, right?
Good evening, council members. I'll try and make this brief. I agree with a couple of the people that mentioned that we are a different community than we were seven years ago. That is true. However, the main issues have not changed, and the people that brought issues up, such as parking, trash, noise, those are the same issues that people care about, and we know how to address those issues. And the ordinance that we did get public comment and process and process and process, you know, we put together an ordinance that works. I don't think we have time to do that more when we're dealing with budget cuts and what's going on with our economy. We need to become a more resilient community as quickly as we can. So I suggest reinstating that very strict ordinance that we had. And if we want to take public comment and make, you know, changes or revisions in the future, let's do that. But let's move swiftly on this now so that we can strengthen our community, bring more jobs to our town, and we can work on those issues later. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gresh. Is there anyone else? Okay. Oh, got in under the wire.
Bob McIntyre, 52-year resident builder in town. Built a lot of the larger homes that seem to be not problematic, but looked down upon. But our business in this town is tourism. All our dollars come from the tourists. And from what I've seen in the last six, seven years is, everything's way off. Your TOT's down, restaurants are closing, there's just not a lot of business in town. The velocity of money has been greatly diminished, and I think we need to get back to business, perhaps. Also, we could put a stakeholder meeting together with the people, the builders and managers of these properties, with the city council to help craft some of these proposed changes for input on that, and I'd like to see our town get back to business of vacation rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I suggest, thank you. Anyone else going once? Okay, we're moving to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. We do have several hands raised. First up, we have Melissa Soderstone.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, I did vote for Measure T. I'm very disappointed we're going to have vacation rentals back in our neighborhoods, but I guess it's basically inevitable at this point. I think we really should focus on taking more community input. While it is said it is a small minority, this small minority are those of us that live here. We had six vacation rentals on my street alone, and none of them had any violations. And that's because either they were quiet by the time enforcement showed up, or enforcement chose to give them a warning, or everyone on our street got tired of reporting them and just stopped doing it, just dealt with it, bought earplugs. We have a slow sign that we put out in the street when my kids are playing. We had someone pee on it one time. Traffic is insane. I don't own a vehicle, so inevitably, someone is going to park in my driveway. Speed is not enforced. I live in the Keys area. People just fly down the state streets. It is incredibly dangerous. It's just really unfortunate. When I bought my home, we did not have vacation rentals proliferating in our neighborhoods, and I don't know that I would have purchased where I did had I known this is what we were going to be left with. So I do ask that while we go forward with this ordinance, we make sure that we're taking new community input. Things have changed, times have changed. We really need to think this, and I think that displacing the people that have found rentals that have opened up in the interim, we really need to make sure that those people are not being displaced by people choosing to go back to the VHR style. I know several people on my streets or in my neighborhood that have benefited from the lack of VHRs, and it would be really horrible to see these families displaced by this ridiculousness coming back. So please take a pause and ask for community input because this ban certainly was constitutional, and that is always the chance that someone will bring back a further citizens' initiative. We've heard lots of threats from people saying that they'll sue if we have to put new limits on it, but please take it slow and consider the people that actually live in this neighborhood and not the greedy people. No one needs to own two homes. If you can't afford it, sell it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lorraine Jackson.
Hello. Thank you for allowing comments. I'm an educator and professor, and I have loved South Lake Tahoe for decades. I, as a single parent, bought and own a three-bedroom, two-bath cabin in Highland Woods, which I purchased in September 2001 when the Twin Towers fell. I initially bought it, there were no VHR rules, but when they came, I complied. I had external signage, which I paid for. I paid the TOT, the permit fees. I complied with the bear bin. When the rules changed, I complied with inspections for fire safety. I provided internal signage on exits. I kept my property safe, and I hired locals for repairs and cleaning. In the 20 years that I've owned my cabin, there were no complaints against my VHR, and my VHR's owner occupied on each side. In fact, my neighbors appreciated my VHR and even rented it to have friends visit. When the Measure T was reversed, they texted me to share the good news. So not all neighbors have problems with VHRs. Guests were generally families, some of whom visited. There was a set of grandparents who, year after year, brought their grandchildren to ski. When I was no longer allowed to rent, they took their kids to, the grandkids, to Colorado. One of the things I did was I posted rules inside the cabin. I also put the rules in the rental agreement, and guests, when they visited, contributed much to the local economy. There's three things, in the interest of time, I want to leave you with. I'm hopeful and want to affirm that priority be given to people who had long-term VHRs in good standing. I lost years of needed income as a single parent, and I hope to put some of the money towards home repairs and investing in my Tahoe home. I also want to mention that I'm not a big-time investor, as some locals feel like people are. I managed my property myself, and I would like to encourage you not to make it burdensome for owners like myself who have experience with property management. I think in-person check-in is burdensome. I had a lockbox and explicit instructions in the rental agreement, and I also texted guests the rules and regulations before they arrived. With increasing costs for everything, property tax, insurance, repairs, roofing, et cetera, property management fees on top of all of that would make it difficult to make a rental worthwhile. Instead, I would encourage you to require VHRs to post city rules inside VHRs and perhaps even send a flyer to VHR permit holders that they could post, so the rules are clear. The last point I want to-
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Your time is up.
All right.
Thank you. Next up, we have Andrew Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor Wallace and council members. My name's Andrew Pierce. I'm the attorney for the South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group. I'm the one that litigated the case against the city for all these years. My clients are people who care about South Lake Tahoe. Most of them own one property or two. Maybe Mr. McIntyre might be the biggest one of the people I've talked to, actually. He owns three or four or five. They do care about the community. They're invested in the community. They've been in the community for many, many years. It's a belief of our group that the city should return to the 2018 rules and that persons who are still owning homes, who had permits in good standing, should be allowed to start business again by the renewal process, which does not require an inspection. The suggestion was made earlier about having the permits be for the previous duration so they don't end at the same time, makes perfect sense. That would avoid having a jam up a year from now. Measure T was always flawed, always unconstitutional. We knew that from the beginning. The favoritism towards permanent residents is so out of character with Supreme Court decisions, it wasn't really a question about whether we were going to win or lose the lawsuit. Because of that, many people who spent the last three years unable to rent are very angry and are thinking about bringing damages claims. I think the likelihood of them doing that is much lower if they are allowed to start renting immediately, and I think that's good for the city. I did write a three-page letter, and I sent it to all of you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at that. I don't want to repeat what's in there, but I just want to mention a couple of other items. One is, SEQA may come in if you start changing the law. If you outlaw existing use, that could trigger SEQA. Secondly, there's no question that noise and trash were not impacted by short-term rentals. It would have been very helpful to Ms. Stroud in litigating against me, and by the way, she did a great job, to be able to prove that noise and trash went down in 2021 when Measure T fully kicked in. There was no evidence of that, and she had the full access to all the city records. In fact, in 2018, per VHRs, there were only 16 upheld noise violations citywide. That's barely more than once a month out of hundreds of thousands of rental nights. As we know, trash peaked in 2023 after Measure T had taken effect. So I would like the city to avoid the danger of triggering lawsuits, and believe me, many people would like me to sue, and I would rather not. And I also think the city should avoid having rules about, against clustering, because I think they will- I think they will be impractical and will cause favoritism and be difficult to enforce, particularly as properties are sold.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Your time is up.
All right.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Russ Porter.
Hello. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me time to voice my concerns. My wife and I own a second home, 97 steps to the Heavenly tram. Not sure how that ended up not in a tourist zone. So some of the tourism exclusion zones were a little bit arbitrary, I find. In either case, we had a permit. We paid business taxes. The city considered us a business. We paid taxes to the city. We paid taxes to the federal government. We paid taxes to the state based on the income of our property. So I'd like you just to all consider for a moment that you own a business, or that you are part of a business, and that your city council arbitrarily decided for you not to have a business. Goodbye. See you. No grandfather clause, just too bad for you. And like others said, you must be too rich to be in that business. We were doing this for 20 years or so. We had zero fines. I gave my number to all of the neighbors. I felt like it was amicable for everybody, and most of our renters were families. They were not part of yours. And we did not allow special events at our property. I would like to remind everybody that when a city removes a business's ability to operate, they're opening themselves up to compensatory rules and all the rest of stuff. And they say it's unconstitutional, but certainly, or constitutional, but they say it was ruled unconstitutional. Either way, thank you very much. I do encourage you to please just reenact the existing rules and allow our businesses to continue as before. And sure enough, provide the extra surveillance necessary to enforce those rules that you created in the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, sorry. Next up, we have Lynn Thol.
Good evening. Dr. Lynn Thol from South Lake Tahoe. There were so many good comments already in support of reinstating the prior ordinance. I would just like to say, me too, but I couldn't keep track of all the people who had those comments. So I'll just make four points really quickly. The first, obviously, is to reinstate the prior ordinance from 2018. It was working. There's evidence it was working prior to Measure T ending it. Second point is, I encourage you to prioritize those who were in good standing with their VHR permits and still own their homes. Things change drastically for many of us through no fault of our own, and we should have priority among, before those who came after us. Third point is, please don't hold owners and our guests of licensed VHR at a higher standard than you do the owners that say that they are there full-time. I have many people surrounding me and my property who are much louder and out of control, either them or their, quote, "full-time renters," who are more out of control than myself or anyone who I would allow to rent my facility. Last point is, I do support the comment that came out before. I thought it was very creative about the no-cry-wolf clause. That is, if there is someone from the community who continues to complain about VHRs and they continue to be unsubstantiated, that individual should be ignored. It all comes down to the bottom line, which is good management and equitable, strict, but fair enforcement of the original ordinance is what is going to protect the safety and rights of everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Dugan Smith.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks for taking my comments. I appreciate it. My name is Dugan Smith. I've been in town 27 years. Came as a J-1 visa, working at Heavenly. And now I have two kids in school locally, and I'm here for good. I was making my living on vacation rentals, and now I'm not. It seems you've got lots of information, and a lot of people have spoken, so my prepared comments are a little scattershot now. So I'll just try and hit a couple of things that stood out to me. The city suggestion of fining people for personal use of their home. My situation is, we bought our home that we live in full-time with our kids, and we can afford it because we've always been able to vacation rent it part-time. And we did that with a proper permit prior to Measure T. And we've had a qualified vacation rental permit up until now. But it's our intention to go forward, living in our home for 10, 11 months of the year, and renting it some of the time. And we don't want to be fined for having our kids' party, or guests coming over, or whatever in our home. I understand that it could be an excuse used at times, but I think that's a small exception. The other thing is, we also own a duplex that we had permits on. And I've seen it, you know, mentioned that you might consider not grandfathering those in. The policy ordinance, as written, doesn't allow new multifamily permits. And I can see both sides of that. There was the gentleman that spoke earlier. As it's a multifamily unit, is a great way for a local to get in and afford a house here and create some sort of income. But I don't expect that to be overruled. But I would ask that you grandfather in those permits from 2015. The city manager told me that there were 60 back then, and I, you know, I did a bit of a review of sales records, and I think you might be looking at less than 20 eligible permits. And it's not going to make any sort of dent in available housing, and it's really going to hurt my family and other families like mine that invested in that plan. I would ask that all the, all the permits in good standing are grandfathered in. I think if you're saying that you can only issue 150 permits a month, that's going to take you five or six months to get through those people that qualify in that way. And I think that gives you ample time to consider changes to the ordinance, or community workshops, or whatever you want to do. You can do these things simultaneously. There's no need to pause this and get everything straight first. The big advantage of it not being Measure T anymore is it's a living ordinance that you can change as you see fit, as the community changes, as information changes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have Eric Lentz.
Good evening, Mayor Wallace. Eric Lentz, homeowner, South Lake Tahoe. A couple of points, and I won't just repeat what many people are saying. First off, you know, here in, on our street in Tahoe, we've had locals, locals who have rock concerts in their park, in their backyard. We've had live DJs. And we had a neighbor a couple of years ago try to burn his house down, which also set a full-size lodgepole tree on fire. Luckily, South Lake Tahoe has an amazing fire department, and they squashed it. But my point is, it's not just vacationers coming to Tahoe that create problems. It's locals themselves. So it's a little unfair to say vacation homeowners are loud or obnoxious. We have neighbors who are very loud. The rock concert, I didn't mind, it was kind of fun. But I'm sure I had some neighbors that were displeased. The one thing about what you're discussing regarding requiring property management companies for vacation homeowners, I would advise against that. There are many property management companies that will not take a vacation home if it's, you know, 30, 40 nights a year. They want people who have 200, 300 nights a year as clients. And if you require everybody to have a property management company, then you're really going to be gearing these vacation homes towards people who rent their homes out 200 to 300 days a year, not the local homeowner, like the gentleman before me, who may do it a few times a year, 30, maybe 30 nights a year. They don't necessarily need a property management company to do that. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have iPhone.
Hey, sorry. Yeah, this is Brett Richardson. I'm a local resident here. Yeah, happy to see that, you know, the city's looking at modifying the rules. I just have a few points to make that maybe some of the other folks haven't brought up yet, or have. Just to follow up on the last call, yeah, I'd advise against property management company requirements. I see that as a pass-through cost that'll go to the tourists. It'll just basically raise the overall rates that any VHR people will have to charge. That might lower the overall VHR occupancy, which would then lower tax revenue to the city potentially. I'm not an expert there, but that's just a thought. Something to consider that I don't think have been brought up yet, but I think there's a lot of concern from folks around just the turnover of people in and out of town. And I would suggest considering something like a four-night minimum, like per booking, if that's possible. So if folks just aren't coming in on a Friday, leaving on a Saturday, et cetera, et cetera, I think that's kind of manageable. Potentially even considering, like, banning complete holidays, like, just not allowing it over July 4th or something. I think those are solutions to think about that could help locals, like, meet in the middle. As part of the arbitrary, or part of the minimum distance requirement, I think is a bit arbitrary. I think, for example, if I have a neighbor that maybe Airbnb's out only in the winter, and then another neighbor across the street only does it in the summer, you're basically, you know, cutting someone short just because the other neighbor kind of got their permit first. So I find the minimum distance thing kind of weird as well. I do agree with Cody on some potential, like, solutions to prompt renters, either in the booking, or require VHR renters to list out the city ordinance and rules. If that's possible, I'd also recommend adding communication around what transportation we have, such as, like, Lake Link, the bike paths, you know, the free, you know, parking shuttle, et cetera. I think it's really important to, like, you know, force our VHR renters, like, out of their cars and using alternative methods. And I guess just to close out, I'm curious from the council if anything you're suggesting right now for the potential changes would be open to, like, litigation in the future? I just know as a local resident, reading all the Facebook posts online, there's a lot of VHR folks that are kind of, like, chomping at the bit to, you know, come after the city or sue the city if they feel wrong. So I would just, like, caution you guys on, you know, any considerations you're making that don't open up the city to just more noise. That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, that's it for hands raised. I will note for the record that the city council received written public comments from Wallace, Dalib Frye, Gresh, Kalida, Cool, Luellin, Pierce, and Sheer, Robek, Roberson, S.J., Thule, Todd and Wang, Kerrigan, Anderson, Anderson G., Anderson M., Bryson, Kenny. Oops, sorry, I've gotten to item number 22. And Sharma.
Thank you, Ms. Lincolnship. So we've been taking public comment for almost two hours, so we're going to take a short break, because I believe, I believe that this conversation is going to be extensive. Council, start thinking about whether or not you want to go beyond our 10 o'clock drop-dead time. So we will take a 10-minute break. We'll come back in at 9:00 and resume.
Your honor.
Your honor.
Okay, we're bringing the item, or the meeting back to order, and we're coming back to council for discussion. So there's just a few things that I'm going to start this off with is, I have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Stroud. In the current ordinance, special events and parties, aren't those already disallowed in the current ordinance?
Correct.
Thank you. And then the, another comment that was made that there was like 550-plus VHRs in the tourist core, but aren't most of those timeshares, and that's sort of what you talked about at the beginning of the, this item?
Some of those may be timeshares. I don't have the breakout of that.
Okay. Okay. And then, okay, I'm going to ask, Mr. Roberts, you have, I'll save my stuff for later. Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think if I was to...
Microphone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think if I had to sum up everything, I think the main consensus from just almost everybody is enforcement is the key. I know the council agrees on that 100%. And before going further, I want to thank our city manager, his promise to put forth the efforts to make that enforcement come true. All the VHR owners have no problem with enforcement. They don't want parties in their buildings. They don't want bad actors in their buildings either. They want to follow the rules. The individual homeowners want the same. I spoke with Airbnb and Verbo, and they say the same thing. They, they are right lock-stuck with us to get rid of the bad actors. It looks bad on them as well. And the neighborhoods and the residents also, their, although, you know, their complaints about the, you know, the noise and the trash and the parking is the same thing. They just, they want enforcement. And without that enforcement, that's where Measure T came out about. And I'm not going to go in the past at all, but on that key enforcement, and I know a lot of people mentioned that if, if we don't do enforcement right, or if the council screws up this new enactment of ordinance as, and amendments, that we will have another Measure T. I want to look at it more of not the threat of another Measure T or another initiative, but that what we will have is a happy and a divided city again. And I think that's what our key goal here is on the council, is to prevent that. Into the 11 items that were brought forward, the changes to 11 where the ordinance is from 2018, I agree with almost all of them. I have a couple of additions I'd like to add in there, and a couple explanations on how I feel on some of them, and a couple I disagree with. I think we need to change the occupancy to two bedrooms plus two, two people for every bedroom, and then two for the, the open areas. On, I think it's 1114 ordinance, it says a house of eight can, or five bedrooms can have up to 20 people. That's already a party. You've already invited a party to your location. So I think this makes a little bit more sense. I think we need to raise the fines to 2,000 for the first infraction, then to three, and then 5,000. And I think we need to have a conversation, who, who are we fining? Is it the owner of the property, the property manager, or the tenant, or, or all of them? I think there's a conversation there that maybe all of them should be fined, or in some cases. I think we need to require the compliance with the defensible space. I do believe that the in-person check-in is required, but part of that component, the most important part of that is that it also has, they sign a code of conduct. And that way, we have a first contact with the, with the new tenants. They know that for one, that there is a level of enforcement because they have met somebody in person. We have a signature that they know what the rules are. That helps us in enforcing any of the infractions, or anytime we do take away a permit, fewer of them will be reinstated on appeal. And so it just starts that level of enforcement right on the very beginning. And one of the, I forget if it was in a letter, or if it was in a phone call or something, but one of the persons I spoke to said they did that on their own, and they said one time they found out the people showed up and they were having a bachelor party, she canceled the contract right there because she didn't allow parties. So it's a great opportunity right there to catch, you know, if there's, you know, more than is allowed. And so I think it makes a lot of sense for us. I know sometimes it may be difficult for some, especially the individual owners, but I think it's a huge portion of this enforcement, and it's the start of it. The professional property management, originally I was considering that it should be a brick and mortar, but I think the term that we're looking at, what we're looking at is, it could be anybody. It could be the owner himself, it could be the neighbor next door, or the owner who is, who has somehow, you know, encouraged him to be that person, that contact person. But the challenge in the past has been that sometimes it's been the housekeeper. The housekeeper doesn't have a dog in the fights, or really doesn't, doesn't offer much enforcement, or, or anything for either side. So this is just meaning somebody professional, some level, you know, a third party or whatever, or, or a local property management company. But something, some professional element that can enforce rules and, and can observe what's, what's taking place there. The new garbage requirements, I guess that's something that Tahoe refuse will be involved in going forward, whether that's, you know, the bear, bear boxes, or if it's just those black bins that we have right now. But either way, we need to have something in there that states that there's enough of them. And I think that I'm, I'm on the JPA for the waste management, and I'm going to discuss with them that we should... that we should probably talk about having a dumpster somewhere with some code on it, that to give them the opportunity to take the trash out of town with them. So they don't have to take it home, they just drop it on their way out of town. So as a way of helping them comply with what our rules are. The things that I do not agree with on the list up there is number 1, 2, 3. I don't think we should have any restrictions. I don't think we should have any buffers. Not so much because of the lack of fairness, or the lack that somebody's gonna say they, you know, got cheated, or we're being God who gets to permit or not. But because if we do do this enforcement, the way we plan to, and the way we need to, then there will be a non-issue. What's wrong with having a building next door with a lot of great people having fun? So I don't think we need, I think they will take care of themselves if we do what we're supposed to do.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robbins.
I'll start with the things we agree on, on I think we all agree on, and that is that we are here now in no small part due to the failure of actual functional enforcement in the 2018 code. But enforcement has to be both legal and effectual. It has to be something that we don't just say we do, or promise to do. It has to also actually be something we can effectively do. Otherwise, we're just having enforcement on paper, but not in reality. And a good example of that is things like, is a code that says, "You shall have no parties." But if you're not there to greet the tenants when they arrive, how do you know how many people are actually showing up? Right? You don't act, if it's all done remotely through a key box, and through an entry code that you're given by text message, how do you know if it's one person, five people, or 10 people? Right? So we have to do this in a way that is not just saying we're gonna do better enforcement, but we have to set up an environment, a situation in which we actually can achieve that enforcement. Otherwise, this is all nonsense. And so for that reason, one of the things that I think is absolutely clutch here is that you need to have 24-hour on-call, in-the-basin management. It can't be an hour away in Gardinerville, right, where you can't get up here during a snowstorm anyway, and by the time you get here, it's three hours later. Or someone who's a property owner who's asleep in the middle of the night and not answering their phone. It needs to be professional management. And then, more broadly though, I think what I've been frustrated about hearing was, when this came to council the first time around, what we heard from the VHR industry that showed up to speak on it was that, "Oh, we're all supportive of better regulation than we had last time." "Yes, last time it didn't work, you know, bring this back with better regulation." And today, it's been, "Bring back the measure from 2018 without changes." "The measure from 2018 was so perfect and doesn't need any changes." "Don't, you know, you can do changes later, but go with what we had in 2018, make no changes." That measure worked so well, that a majority of the city's public voted to ban Airbnbs in their entirety after a contentious vicious campaign on that topic. So I don't think the 2018 measure was working well. I don't think the situation that we had prior to Measure T was working well, nor was it starting to work well, nor were we seeing such improvements right at the end, because a majority of the public said, "We've had enough. This is nonsense. The city isn't actually responding to any of our concerns." Me personally, I have experienced this. I had an Airbnb across my backyard, sharing my backyard fence, that would have hot tub parties into the middle of the night, that would have bachelorette parties into the middle of the night, and another Airbnb across the street from me. I had people park in my driveway in front of my garage, blocking me in. Right? And I have very little recourse at that point, because it's a car on private property. Right? So yeah, one of the things we need to do is to have towing off of people's yards when the VHR, you know, owners park in your driveway and block you in. How is that the neighbor's fault, that they have to pay upfront for that towing? That's absurd. That generates the kind of animosity that was the failure of the 2018 measure, which didn't have anything about that in it, by the way. We're talking about how good the old measure was, or people were talking about how good the old measure was, that we need to fix. And lastly, we really do need to have a meaningful clustering limit. El Dorado, the idea that clustering is unworkable is utterly belied by the fact that even El Dorado County managed to do it in their part of the basin. And if the county government can manage to do it, I think we can swing that too. So I don't think that's so complex that it's untenable. But it means that, you know, when the city was considering 150-foot limit, well, my property is 150 feet wide. That's literally an Airbnb to the left of me and an Airbnb to the right of me. So that's not a meaningful limitation, but we should be talking about modeling or replicating the 500-foot limit from the county, which means that every city block could have one or two Airbnbs on it, which is plenty for a neighborhood to have an Airbnb two to a block. So that is important, because it limits the impact of Airbnbs on any individual homeowner. And it says that the homeowners have a right to enjoy residential, their residential peace and quiet of their neighborhood, and not to be surrounded on four sides, or to have 10 in one block, which is what we had, which was one of the problems with the 2018 issue, 2018 ordinance, is that it had no limitation on how much, how concentrated the impact of Airbnbs could be. Again, which is what left us with the move to Measure T. It's another example of how things were not working well prior to the Measure T. So I would highly recommend we model, we copy the county's 500-foot limitation rule, which is clearly something that can be implemented well enough. The county managed to do it. And one more thing on that topic, we can much more easily pare back a clustering limit if we find that there's really no, that, you know, we have this clustering limit, and it's working well, and there's no problem. We want to drop it back from 500 to 300 feet. You can go back very easily. But going from, say, 150 feet to say, "That's not working," because you're still getting tons of clusters, and it's demolishing the quality of life of the people who are in those clustered areas, implementing a clustering ordinance after you've already issued permits becomes very difficult. Because then you can only attrick them away, which was the problem that has happened in the county side. Here, we have an opportunity to start fresh. So we can start with 500 feet, and then roll it back if we want. And I recommend that we do that, and schedule, you know, a two-year-from-now review of the clustering to see if we want to reduce it. But there's, we can always draw that back. It's virtually impossible to push that forward. So I would recommend that we have good clustering. Lastly, I would suggest that we have a requirement for noise monitors that connects to the 24-hour monitoring. This is one of the proposed alternatives to Measure T implementation that happened after Measure T was passed, was the idea to require a noise monitoring system that would connect to your property management, to allow them to come out. The problem we had with the 2018 ordinance that was in effect was it puts law enforcement requirements on the public. It becomes the responsibility of the neighbors to call in complaints all the time. And so it's always on the neighbors to initiate the complaints, rather than having, rather than any mechanism in which either the property management or code enforcement can be proactive. And again, you're talking about doing better enforcement. That's how you make that enforcement feasible. You don't just say, "We have a noise ordinance." You have a monitoring system that actually detects noise so that the property manager can come out and see what's going on. So I'll...
That's number five.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, again, a cap lower than 1,400 is a reasonable idea, but the better way to do that than have a cap of 1,400 that can be anywhere is to have a clustering requirement, which inherently generates a cap by the requirement of spacing. I'm not keen on one of the ideas, which is to limit VHRs to certain neighborhoods and not others. I think in terms of picking winners and losers, and inherently in that conversation is the idea that having VHRs next to you makes you the loser. Right? To say that we should have VHRs in this designated neighborhood, but not others. You know, "We're all in this together. We're all in this equally." We shouldn't have exclusionary zoning that benefits one neighborhood to the expense of another. But clustering is something that is even throughout the city. It limits the numbers in total, but it also limits their spacing, so that one unlucky homeowner can't have, or renter in my case, can't have five Airbnbs next to them. And that just, that puts all of the burden on a handful of people. That's not fair to them. So that, those are my suggestions for right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Mr. Bass?
Yeah, so largely I agree with really what Councilmember Roberts and Councilmember Robbins said, especially in the fact of what Mr. Roberts said, that really our job here is to try to find the middle. And I think that's what failed the last time around, when this was happening in 2018. And that's why we ended up at a voter initiative, and that's what we have to try to avoid this time around. And I think that that's critical, and to kind of look back at why and what was not compromised before. And I agree. I think that the buffer is something that you have to, we have to look at the issues if you are surrounded on all sides by a VHR. And I think we had quite a few situations of that in the last ordinance, and that is what we have to look at. I think when you do look at the cap, really as Mr. Robbins just said, the buffer will establish the cap. I think we heard earlier that if we were at 150 feet, it was, I believe, 1,288. What is it if we're at 200 feet? We, I think that's what sets the cap. And where we're in a very unique place is that we have a clean slate, and different than the county, where there was already VHRs next to each other, and there's no really way to move them, because they've already had the permit. We are in a clean slate. And so to actually rule this out, we can make that work, especially if we're only permitting 150 a month, because we can pick neighborhoods and roll out whatever we decide that buffer is. And I think that will strike a compromise that will hopefully avoid the division that we saw before. I think it's really critical that we look at the fact that 700 of the homes, or 600, have actually been sold, and right now, there's only 700 or so remaining that were existing VHRs. So to me, that's the number that I could be comfortable with, because those houses are already owned by people that potentially want to become VHRs. I do think it's really important. I think the biggest complaints and the one compromise that was not struck, which was what brought the voter initiative, was the fact that there was no buffer, that you had four VHRs literally surrounding people's houses. And I think that, you know, we have to remember the zoning. What our zone is, is for the primary use, is for residentialism. And we, and the whole Lake Tahoe Basin, have more local workforce housing in South Lake Tahoe than anywhere in Lake Tahoe. And I think we need to make sure we preserve that as the primary use, and the vacation homes are secondary use. And with that being said, that's the reason you need a cap. That's the reason that you're not just gonna allow one street to have seven VHRs and one local living right in the middle of all of them. So to me, the buffer is critical to find that middle. And again, I know that that's not what everybody wants, but I think that's really where we find the middle ground. You know, as far as the requiring a local property manager, I think that yes, we should have somebody local. I don't think it necessarily needs to be a brick and mortar, but I think we should consider licensing or permitting the property managers, even if it's gonna be the owner. They actually have to get a permit, and that way, if they're not holding up to it, we can take that permit from them, and they have to go to somebody else that actually is holding up to what the permit requirements are to be a property manager. So I think that's something that may take a little work to figure out, how do we create, you know, a permit for a property manager? But I think that that could really hold them accountable, and have a way for us to take it away from them if they're not holding their tenants accountable. As far as increased consequences for violations, I definitely support that. I think also, you know, there's ways to administratively write in basically teeth-to-enforcement that don't take somebody coming out to the house. If you do require a monitor that's looking at the front door, that also records the decibel of sound, and we get a complaint, but we couldn't get a code enforcement officer out there. In my business, if the Department of Cannabis Control requests our surveillance or anything, and we don't have it to them within 24 hours, it's a violation. And we could require the same thing. If we got a complaint, we want the surveillance from the front porch, as well as the decibel readings, and if you don't have that to us within 24 hours, it's a violation. And if we get it, and we find that there is a violation, it's a violation. And then, those are built in to where we're not having to use a CSO. Or if a CSO wasn't available to come out, the second thing is the police department's sending you an email, "You've gotta send me this surveillance back, and your decibel reading back from this time period." And I think there's more mechanisms that we can build in, that really, I think, hold the accountable, you know, it holds the property owner accountable to make sure those tenants are not gonna make those violations. But I think that the enforcement can be written in in both ways. And really, I think too, the enforcement that we have on the ground should be looking at the people that aren't willing to get permits. I think we've got to really think about, we still have people that are just renting houses that are essentially, after we enact this, in my opinion, that are evading taxes. I mean, that is exactly what they're doing. So I think that is the enforcement we need to be looking at as well. As we look at, you know, the providing permits for the preference, I think that gets really sticky if we start to look at a buffer, because how do you, you know, if there's three people that have permits that were right in a row to each other, and we're gonna decide that that's not okay, then how do you do that? There's also gonna be complications. If we do do a buffer, how do you pick who gets that? You know, is it a lottery? Is it, it starts a whole, you know, we've really got a lot to think through. But I think it's so critical that we really do make sure that we don't have a whole block of VHRs, or VHRs that are just surrounded by, you know, one parcel surrounded by five VHRs. I think that was probably the biggest complaint, and why there was a voter initiative the last time. From what I've been told from multiple people, is that if the 150-foot compromise would have been struck, the initiative of Measure T would have never even happened. So I think that we really've got to think about that. The fact that we're at a clean slate will allow us to roll that out differently than really anybody else that had already existently, you know, had permits. Yes, is it complicated? Yes, do we have to really think through it, and how to make it fair, and how to make it work? But being at a clean slate allows us to do that. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Mr. Roberts and Mr. Robbins, I'm gonna go to Mr. Jenkins first, and then I'm gonna speak, and then we'll start around again. So, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it is our job to protect the integrity of single-family residential areas. That's, it is a primary job under the code. We have residential areas. It's supposed to mean something. And so I respect that. And typically, that would be something that would be the highest form of concern that I would have. So whatever we do, we have to respect the people who live here. It's important that we, that, and I'm in favor of proceeding with VHRs, but that we have to inform the owners and the renters of the rules of the road. That they have to know what the rules are, they have to know what the penalties are, and they have to do it, or their permit will be revoked. And as I, if I'm correct, the permit to operate a vacation rental is not a property right. It is a license. It is a license here. In some cities, it is not a license. In Avalon, where I worked for a few times, it was a property right. So we don't have that. So if someone doesn't live up to the rules of the license, you revoke it. And, you know, it's not that they have a discontinuing malfeasance. So the idea that the city manager and the city attorney, they're talking about enforcement, I support. I wish that was part of this, because we would just add it into this, that we need to have active enforcement, 24-hour enforcement. We need to give the department the tools to do what they need to do. And that we need to revoke permits if they, and I mean, you know, in as proper way as possible, but we revoke them if they mess up, using some of the tools that were suggested, the monitoring tools, the sound, noise, sound tools, and have that as evidence, one way or the other, as they do with some of the businesses here, that they don't do for all businesses, except for certain businesses, which is kind of an interesting, interesting point. What does that say? Don't reach, okay, input on, oh, I, oh, and I know, well, my wife would, if she could read it to me. I do agree with the comment the gentleman made about outreach. I think that is very important, irrespective of what we do. And again, I'm in favor of proceeding with this, with VHR permitting. But we have to do outreach, and we have to do meaningful outreach to ensure that whatever we're doing is achieving the goals that we've stated are important to us, that we're addressing the neighborhood issues, that we're addressing enforcement issues. And while I, at first, have had some... issues. And while I, at first have had some reservations about the, the spacing, clustering, I guess you'd call them, I have to not refer to what other clusters mean, but is that, that I, I can understand, and I have talked to people in neighborhoods, particularly in El Tahoe, where they have had serious problems with clustering, of misbehaving people. Again, that's enforcement side. And so maybe we have to take a look at that, that cluster issue. And, oh, I think, I think, Madam Mayor, that, believe it or not, that's it.
Okay. So we'll go back around, but I'm going to make a few comments, too. So I made a list. I think that we should make permits available staggered at, according to staff, 150 per month, with first preference to those permit holders that left the program in good standing, as well as the QVHR permit holders that lost their permits this month. I think we need to increase our fees to cover costs, all costs, including wording that stays, states which portion goes to enforcement, so that people in the community understand that we are charging the, the VHRs for the enforcement of the VHRs. I also believe, like Mr. Roberts said, that we should change the occupancy to two per bedroom plus two only. In addition to the decibel readers, I, I, the biggest complaint that I have heard is that, is that it shouldn't be on the neighbors to do the enforcement. And I think one of the ways to do that is to have the decibel readers with somebody monitoring them. In addition, the other two items that, noise, parking, and trash seem to be the three big deals. And so having a camera that is also monitoring or focused on the, the garbage area and the parking area, so that it can be monitored by the property manager, manager or owner and dealt with before a neighbor has to complain. I think another thing I agree that we need in-person check-in with signature on a list of rules or code of conduct. And, and, and I, I originally had put bricks and mortar, and then I said professional, but I've liked some of the ideas that come out. If it is a local who does it, the one scenario that I'm concerned about is, say, say someone owns their home, and then they own a vacation rental, and they have that vacation rental rented for a period of time that they are going to be on vacation. We need to be very careful who they use to be that local monitoring person while they're not here in town. Because I think it was mentioned, in the past, we had problems because they left their housekeeper in charge. And God bless those housekeepers, they're amazing, they work really, really hard. But I can't imagine a little housekeeper going to a house at 2:00 in the morning to deal with 20 drunk guys. That just seems, that seems wrong. And so I, that's why I was thinking about the professional property management.
Setting up for failure.
Well, yeah, exactly. So if we do enforcement right, and we take the onus of enforcement off of the neighborhoods and off of the neighbors, then I, we could have a clustering rule, and we could have a no clustering rule. And I'm telling you, if we have one neighbor who is a bad actor, it's an enforcement issue. If we have six that are in our neighborhoods that are amazing and never cause problems, then that is not an issue. And so I am not really for the, the buffers and the clustering. Another thing is, I don't believe that they should be allowed in any multifamily connected units, whether they're apartments or condos, except in the commercial or tourist core. Because you don't, when you're in the commercial area or in the tourist core area, you have no reasonable expectation of quiet. I'm sorry, you just don't, because that's the area that your unit is in. If you're in a residence and you have a shared wall with somebody, you should, there should not, you should not be sharing a wall with a vacation home in a residential neighborhood. I would have liked to have raised the fines, but according to Heather, we, we are limited at the 15, 25, and 5,000. I, I think that it, we should have the discussion about who gets fined, whether it's the person in the unit, the owner, or the property manager, or all three. Now, with regards to the Planning Commission and the final decision, I, I had a little bit of heartburn on that at first, until I had the conversation that I'm going to share with you with staff. Before someone goes to Planning Commission, they've already had for their, because it's only for revocations of permits. So they've already probably had three violations, and they've had the opportunity to talk to three, the hearing officer three times. So then they get to the Planning Commission, and it's a fourth shot at the, at the situation. And so it will bog down City Council when we should be delegating that to the Planning Commission, and I'm 100% okay with that. We should review that, though, to make sure, because we have had problems in the past where the Planning Commission didn't always align with what the council was trained to do in the community. And so I want to make sure, you know, review it after a year, and whether that is working. But that's four bites at the apple before they get, before they could ever have appealed to the City Council. So I, I'm okay with leaving it in the, at the drop dead in the Planning Commission. I think that, Mr. Bass, I know you've talked about this a lot, and I think it needs to be at least stated, if not in the code, that permits are not guaranteed for renewal. You have no vested rights. These are annual permits that can be taken away for any reason. I think strict enforcement, strict enforcement, and having the, the ability to go back and look at those decibel readings and the, the cameras for parking and garbage, that can be helpful. I agree with the permitting staying in the police department, working out any new garbage requirements with STR, South Tahoe Refuge. I think defensible space is a requirement. Outreach, we need to let not just the people who are renting, but the people who are owners and the people who are neighbors know what we're doing to make, make things different. Okay. I, I say all these things because I'm not trying, I, I think this is really important, and I think this is for all of council. We're not trying to take one side or the other. I think the sides have been talked about and fought over for years and years and years. Our job, my job as a city council person, is to not do what's right for the VHR owners and not do what's right for the, for the anti-VHR people, but to do what's right for everybody in the community. And that includes finding the balance between quality of life and the economy. And that is so important. I was elected by a certain number of people, everybody up here, but when we were elected, we then became responsible to everybody. And I think that's super important. I think that, I think it just needs to be said that it has been found that it is constitutional to ban these in our neighborhoods, but it has also been determined that VHRs are a residential use. And so I think that that's important to just make those comments. So that's a long, drawn-out version of what I had to say, but I'm done. Mr. Roberts, your turn.
You touched on a few of the things I was going to say. I wanted to, I had forgotten about the permits are not guaranteed for renewal, no vested rights. That kind of gives us the opportunity, if I'm not mistaken, if we, if we started with, without buffers, the following year, we could, we could revise the ordinance again. And then because of not, we could, we could enact it by not renewing some of those, those permits. So I understand what you're saying, Scott, but there, there is an opportunity to go the other direction with it as well. The cameras, I just want to expound on the cameras, and the, the decibel readers, a lot of our management companies are already using them. Airbnb uses quite a bit of them. A lot of the individual homeowners are already using them. They also have a good tracking system. And as Mr. Bass said, you know, it gives, we could request it within 24 hours, you know. So we, we have a lot more data, so we can enforce these things. If there's, if we are enforcing this like we should, even a cluster, if they're bad, then, then they get, they're, they're removed, they're thrown out. And I think this is, I think there's a lot of ways that it can take care of itself. And it just, a lot of our conversation right now is getting away from the main point, is that we need to find enforcement. And you started your conversation by enforcement and how is that going to take place. And, and that's what we need to focus on, is, is how to make sure it works.
Is that your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Before we go to Mr. Robbins, Ms. Stroud, she never presses her button, and so I'm going to go to her, because that's important.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify one aspect that has been brought up by a couple of people on vested rights. And that statement is already in the 2018
Good.
regulations, that there's no property rights conferred by VHR permits. And that issue was litigated in our case. And the Court of Appeal and the published opinion found important that there was an amortization period in Measure T as well. So I would not assume that we would be able to quickly change once permits have been issued and to take them away. So that's the part of the reason why we did the moratorium and are really asking, if you only decide anything tonight, it's where can they go and how many are we going to have? Because once that is decided, it's harder to take them away than to give them. So even though it's not a property right, it's not a vested right, once someone has, you know, made some investment in making changes that are required to meet our ordinance, there might be some amortization required before
Can I ask a question?
non-renewal, if someone's in good standing.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
Ms. Stroud, so it's not a property right, it's a license, that, but the court has said, am I interpreting correctly, that you have a terrible performing party with a license, that, that we can't revoke that license for some, we, we must allow them to be terrible, continuing terrible, before we can revoke the license of them?
No, that's not what the court found at all.
I didn't, I didn't think it was.
We have, in the 2018 regulations, a three-strikes rule.
Okay.
Some version of that has been in our code for a long time, but it's three upheld citations within 24 months.
Okay.
You will not get your permit renewed. It's required that we do not renew it, or it's revoked upon that third upheld citation.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
So that goes to my point that I wanted to make and, and to discuss with Mr., with Councilmember Roberts, which is that, that that's the challenge where if we hand out a bunch of permits now, and they are clustered, and then that is a problem we want to address the clustering, then we're stuck for a long while until we attrit those clusters away. And that's what's happened in, in El Dorado County. So it's vastly, going to be vastly better and easier to start with a larger spacing and then draw it back to allow more density, if that's working out at, at our discretion. You can always add density. It's much worse to try to get rid of it. And it would be politically infeasible. Consider that, like, which of the two units that are close together would lose their permit. You'd have to have a lottery or something like that. And there'd be, it'd be extremely difficult to push that forward, which is why in El Dorado County, that's largely failed, because they're, they're waiting for those units to attrit away, and that can take decades. So I, you know, one way to achieve the goal of limiting the number per month and limiting the number we have at any one given, you know, at any given year, is to have, is to start with a large spacing requirement, a, you know, say a 500-foot requirement. And then next year, we could draw that down to 400 feet, or, or whatever it is. But it's, it's easy to go in, in the, to go in the, in the minus direction, and it is going to be virtually impossible to go in the positive direction. And clustering was the big problem, to the point of, yeah, if we have good enforcement, it shouldn't matter if you're surrounded on all sides by VHRs, is an example of something that's true in principle. It's certainly true in principle, right? If we had idealized enforcement, and everyone was a good actor, and everyone was a good behavior, and, you know, but the problem is, that's not how the world works. It's just not realistic. It means every VHR, every time you rent to someone, you have some chance of it being a jerk. And as much as the managers would like to say, we vet people carefully, they're just looking at their scores on Airbnb, on the, on the user platform. There's very little that you can realistically do when you're renting on an internet platform to someone you've never met before. So every time you have a new person coming in, to some extent, you're rolling the dice. Hopefully, they're loaded, so that it's more likely that they're a good actor than a bad actor, but you're still, it's still a roll of the dice. And this is the problem where if you're surrounded on all sides, then you have six times more chances of having a shitty weekend, because there's a quinceañera party, or a bachelor party, or whatever it is, in the house next door to you, than if you only have the one. And that's why clustering was an item that came up. And it was an example of, the failure to do that was a key reason Measure T happened, because the council decided to abandon clustering. And it's something you can, we really only have a good opportunity to do here and now. And we won't really have a good opportunity to do later, once we start issuing permits, and you have a city block with five of them all right next to each other, and people can rent out three houses adjacent and have, you know, a, a party and fill up three houses next to each other for a, for a big ski party weekend. So that's why I think the clustering is really important. We can always undo it, but you can't really add it. Lastly, two other things I think that are really important that we haven't discussed yet. And that is having a waiting period for getting a VHR permit after a unit sells. Shortly before Measure T went into effect, or went up to, went up for a vote, my landlord called me and told me that he was considering ending my lease at the end of my lease term and converting the house to an Airbnb. So the threat of, and I had friends whose rentals were sold out from under them and turned into Airbnbs. It's one of the reasons I fought so hard for Measure T when, when I, as my first entree into local politics, is I knew people who were really affected by this. The intention of the VHR internet programs, of Airbnb and VRBO, is that it was supposed to be for homeowners and second homeowners who don't use their house all the time to make a little extra cash. It was not ever originally intended to be a means for private equity to exploit the community and to attack the housing market, and to kick out locals and replace them with, with, as hotels for, for tourists. So what I suggest is, one of the suggestions that was, I think was in here, is that we follow some of the North Shore recommend, North Shore actions and say, if a house is sold for two years, you cannot get an Airbnb, a VHR license, right? You have to wait two years before you get it. And that makes it much less appealing for private equity actors, for, for BlackRock and for Vanguard and whatnot, to buy up houses and convert them en masse into Airbnbs, or to have it be something for investors to use as a profit-seeking enterprise, which is, it's, the whole idea, it's, Airbnb stands for airbed, you know, for airbed and breakfast. It was supposed to be for homeowners to make a little, to defray their costs, not as a way for private equity to attack the housing market, which is in many ways what it's become. So I would suggest we have a requirement for a waiting period upon sale, so that my landlord now doesn't have an incentive to say, well, I can replace you with an Airbnb that'll make 50% more money. I'm going to sell it to XYZ Investment Group and kick out the renters with a 90, with a 60-day notice to evict, which is, is a real thing.
Mr. Robbins, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
It's five minutes until 10:00, and we have to, in order to go beyond 10 o'clock.
I have one more thing, and then let's go to that
Perfect.
conversation topic.
Perfect.
Lastly, one of the problems with prior, with the 2018 system that was in place prior to Measure T, when people said there was no enforcement, not only was there no enforcement in the sense of there was no one coming when their complaints were filed, and no one writing citations, but the appeal process for those citations dragged on for goddamn forever, right? And
Those are technical terms, are you?
Correct. Technical, technical, they are legal terms, I can tell you. Right? It, it is a, and, and at the moment, if we have a system that ends at the Planning Commission, which is a politically-appointed body, which has members from, you know, from, from politically-interested groups, from, from the Lodging Association, it can have people from the, the chambers of commerce on it, that's not an independent, that's not a suitably-independent place to have the evaluations. We don't send parking tickets that the city issues to the Planning Commission for review. I don't think we should have the, the citations for, the citations for misuse of an Airbnb. This goes to how do you make enforcement a functional thing? You don't just say you have, going to have fines. You actually have a process that also ends in fines, that can't just be appealed for eternity and delayed for eternity, right? You should have an appeal and a review, and that's it. Or you should, you should have a, a citation that you can appeal, you can review, have that appeal reviewed. You get two bites at the apple, and then you're done. And then, and then And then, and then I don't think they should go all the way up.
I think that you have just a slight, I think Ms. Stroud is going to clarify some stuff.
So citations are not appealed to the Planning Commission, they're appealed to a hearing officer. So only permit revocations and denials are appealed to the Planning Commission currently.
Revocations come when you have three citations, which means that once you have your third citation, it goes before the Planning Commission, which can say, we support, everyone have, we don't support the city council's goals on Airbnb, so you can keep your permit.
Well, it doesn't automatically go to the Planning Commission, only if the person appeals it, that a revocation would go to the Planning Commission.
So that's the point is that we should make the revocation automatic, not something that's appealable.
Okay. We need to
Okay, now we can talk about the
We need to have this conversation. So we have a rule that says that we end at 10:00 and the only way that we can move beyond 10:00 is if we have a majority vote of the council, so
Majority vote for how long?
To
Well, we can choose how long we want to go.
Okay.
Well, we, we can choose how long we want to go or we can choose to finish a portion or all of the, the agenda. So my suggestion, hold on, really quickly, is that we're on item number 19. We already completed item number 25, so that leaves 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24. The only one of which I believe is time-sensitive is item number 23. Mr. City Manager, can you verify that?
That is correct.
Okay. So my suggestion is that we, I, I will move that we go beyond 10:00 and that we finish this item and item number 23 and move, table the other items to our next or a future agenda.
I will just, I will just note that I spoke with the Lyman Bird representatives yesterday and warned them that there was a non-trivial possibility that their item would get bumped.
As, as I did to people in the audience regarding the Lyman Bird issue.
My eyes are blurry, I can't tell if they're actually here or not.
No, they're not.
Okay, well then.
So, so I made a motion that we, thank you. Mr. Bass seconds.
Sorry, you're getting bumped.
You're getting bumped. Okay.
I warned you guys, I warned you guys.
So we have a motion in a second, Ms. Blankenship.
Can I just do a verbal vote on this one?
We can do a verbal vote, totally fine.
Um, Councilmember Roberts?
Ms., Ms. Blankenship, can you hold on one moment? Mr. Jenkins has a question.
I would really appreciate if we not go beyond 10:30 for, for personal reasons, I, I just would appreciate that. And maybe, maybe we could even condense our thoughts so we can come to a decision on it.
You're welcome to make a motion on this item anytime you'd like to expedite the process.
We can also, motion to table this item if we want to continue it more later.
It only takes a second and the motion takes precedence.
Ms. Blankenship, will you please do a roll call vote on extending of my motion?
Councilmember Roberts?
Vote to extend.
Uh, Councilmember Jenkins?
See, yes.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Unanimously carries, thank you.
We have taken care of the business, now we can move back on into our conversation. Mr. Robbins, were you done with your thoughts for, in this?
Uh, where was I?
You just talked about
I covered, I covered a delay on, of a two-year delay.
The Planning Commission.
Yeah, so, sorry, in the Planning Commission, that's what it was at. So part of the problem is that you'll get these fines, we would get these fines, they would be up for revocation and then there'd be even more appeals. So I think the revocation should simply be automatic at the third, at the third citation. And there should not, it should not, it should be an automatic thing, not an appealable process thing that goes on for four additional rounds.
So, so what, if I may, so, so the, your point is that the revocation is, that's it? That it's at the staff level, the revocation occurs?
Correct.
That's interesting.
Well, the, the citations are at the staff level and the third one, then you're revoked automatically. There shouldn't need to be a, because we've said, three strikes and you're out, there shouldn't need to be yet more appeals to a politically appointed body on whether or not the law should be enforced as it says, that has to go through more. All the while, they're continuing to rent out Airbnb for the, the next year, right? This was the whole thing when we said we're supposed to have enforcement.
That's an interesting
And we're not doing it, this is an example of it.
I'm willing to support that, Mr. Robbins, if Ms. Stroud says that we can legally do that.
So I would be somewhat concerned about due process issues if we're not allowing an appeal for a permit revocation, that it would be standard to allow an appeal for any permit revocation. But also the other thing is it acts as kind of a pressure release valve because if there's no appeal, then someone's only remedy would be to file a lawsuit against the city, which they could do, but you know, sometimes an appeal heads that off.
You would make it so that the, what if you made it so that the third citation was simultaneously for a citation and revocation automatically?
Well, they would have the right to appeal the citation.
Correct. To the Planning Commission?
No, to the hearing officer, yes.
Which would be fine, right? So then your first one would be for a citation, your second one would be for a citation, your third one would be citation plus repeal and they'd all be done at the staff level. They would, right, and the third one would be combo of citation and repeal. It wouldn't then drag on for another year of review and review and review and review for the revocation, having already had three citations. That's about
So in that scenario, Ms. Stroud, is that legal?
I would recommend having an appeal
Okay, thank you.
For a permit revocation, okay.
Separate for it or in conjunction with the citation?
The appeal for citations go to a hearing officer, the appeal for revocations currently don't go to a hearing officer, they go to the Planning Commission.
Could we make it do that and be unsolved?
So there are other reasons why a permit could get revoked besides the three citations.
Who is the hearing officer?
So I would just be concerned about
Currently it's Kathy D. Camilo.
Making things overly complicated with various scenarios. I think, I think the staff recommendation does simplify things and shorten the process sufficiently. If someone's getting their permit revoked because they have three upheld citations, it should be a pretty fast hearing at the Planning Commission.
And, and
It hasn't been though.
Ms. Stroud, may I ask a question? Once, once somebody's permit has been revoked and they appeal it to the Planning Commission, there is no further action that they can take?
Currently, they would also be able to appeal that to the city council. We are suggesting taking that second appeal away.
So there would be three strikes with a possible hearing officer, one revocation, one appeal, period? Under this scenario?
That's what we're recommending.
Okay. And, and, okay. So, Mr. Bass?
So yeah, um, you know, again, I think Mr. Robbins made the point around, you know, we're, we're with this clean slate and if we just open it back up to 1,400 and we find, whoa, there's a problem. And, and you know, we've pretty much given up our chance to really create an ordinance that basically effectively creates that, the division essentially, you know, I, I really go back to what created Measure T and it was the fact that there was no, you know, that, that there was no radiance or no saturation clause in the initial ordinance. And I think that that's really important. And when we go back to the data of the fact that only about 700 or 800 homes still exist in the same properties owners that were VHRs before, I think that's a good number to start with. I think what's critical that we do as we roll this out is collect the data to know how many homes have been rented. How many times of the year were we at full occupancy with what we had? Because when we come back in a year, that tells us, okay, do we need to lower that buffer? But to me, the buffer is what's critical in setting the cap. I think that with 200 VHR, excuse me, if we, if we went to a 200-foot buffer, we were around 780 VHRs somewhere in that ballpark. And that seems like what is currently owned by previous VHR owners. So to me, that seems like a good area to start. And then if we have the data in a year to show, okay, how many times did all 780 of those homes be rented in one night? If there was multiple nights a year of that, well, then we know, okay, let's lower the buffer so that we allow more VHRs because we're reaching that max capacity. But I think rolling it out slow and, and again, ensuring that we don't open up our neighborhoods for investors out of town is critical. I do not want to see us all of a sudden have 700 more homes put on the market essentially to become VHRs. And I think that's what we do if we just jump back into 1,400. You're basically saying, okay, we know 780 are already here to become VHRs and now we've put another 700 basically out for investors to come buy, which is obviously going to probably, you know, take a local out of their house. Because if you're a property owner and you can make double the, the rent that you're getting from a long-term lease, most likely you're going to do that. And so I think that we really have to think about the housing and our locals. And to me, I think it's, that number of knowing that we still have that 780 or whatever that number is that is existing owners that were previously VHR owners is a good place to start. And then I think another thing that we haven't really talked about is some requirements on the hosting platforms. You know, there's other cities, Big Bear's done it, La Quinta's done it, that you require hosting platforms to display the vacation home rentals listing and their license. And that we also require hosting platforms to remove any listings for vacation rentals that do not have licenses. I think that those requirements can be written into the ordinance and I think we have to require Airbnb and VRBO to help us in our regulations. I think that's a critical point that we, that we move forward with. But I think really the housing element and making sure that we're not just going to open this up for 700 homes to come be bought in the next year, that is going to displace potentially a lot of locals is something we really got to be mindful of.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I didn't have much.
Your microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't have much. I did like the two things that Mr. Robbins said about the waiting period, I think that needs to be added in. I think that makes a lot of sense. Also, I don't know how we could accomplish it, but that illegal parking, somebody's parking their car on your property, there's, there's got to be a way to eliminate that.
Block me right in my garage.
Yeah, I know. That just, there's got to be some way we can address that, I don't, I don't know how that is. I, I apologize here, but I'm going to say if we add the buffer in now, we are already going to have some of the, if we give special preference to the ones that had it previously, we're already going to have the problem that you're looking to avoid if we don't have the buffers. Where you, where we're going to have to pick some of them. If there, if the 700 and plus that are out there now all come back online and then some of them are surrounding each other, well, now we have a new ordinance that says, has buffering rules. So we're already going to have to pick and choose and who gets what and some people are going to say it's unfair. So I'm just, I'm a little confused as why we're going to be able to do it now instead of doing it the other way where we don't have the buffer to start with.
Because if we, sorry, I'm actually next.
Because it's, I mean, it would be, it would be an ordinance change and the ordinance could say in it, that, you know, the ordinance is able to change at any time, but it's subject to change at any time. So then when the new ordinance goes in, if it has, if it has buffers in, now we can, now we're going to do the same thing that we're going to do that you're suggesting. So it's not any different. I'm sorry, I'm not explaining that.
Well, just to sort of back up what Mr. Roberts just said, my understanding is, is that the county started with, I don't know, 800 or 900 that they allowed?
600.
With, was it only 600?
They started with 600, they increased the amount, the number to 900 and then added a buffering rule.
But they're down to less than 500 because of the buffer and because the attrition, exactly.
That's taken
But everybody has talked, it's taken three years. Because this went into effect when Ms. Lane became county supervisor out there. And she's only been on that board for two and a half years. So the, the attrition happened quickly. It didn't take, I'm just, I'm just saying that it didn't take the decades that everybody thought it might take.
They attrited the numbers, but that doesn't necessarily mean they actually result in spacing, right? That's, that's the problem is you can still have five on a block. It's, some of them have attrited away. The, the point I'm getting at, to, to, to go to Keith's point, right? Right now, we have no Airbnbs in the residential areas at all, so we're starting from zero. We're, we're not starting from having 700 in the neighborhoods at the moment, we're starting from zero. So what we can do is say, what I, the way I would implement, if I were, if I were designing it, a buffer system is to say, the, you, you get a bunch of applications within, say, a two-month window, you randomly sort them in order, right? You randomly assign an order to them, so everybody gets shuffled in randomly like a deck of cards, so you shuffle them. You take the first one who comes up, they get their permit. Then the next one comes up, if they're more than 500 feet away, they get theirs. If they're not more than 500 feet away, they don't. Then the next one, then the next one, and then the next one. And so, you know, it's luck of the draw in that way and that is a fair way to do it. If you want to give priority in that system to previous owners, then you open that up to only the 700 previous, you know, owners that are, that are still own their houses first and you do it the same way. And you have the first round before the, the previous ones. And that's how you do it so that you, you initiate the system where they're all spaced out. And if we start with 500 feet, then we can bring that down. The problem is if we start with nothing, if we just go to 1,400 or 700 or whatever it is in the neighborhoods with no clustering, we then say this clustering actually is a problem because we're getting enough bad actors, you know, here and there that it's really, you know, someone's coming to every city council meeting over and over again complaining about the Airbnbs that they're surrounded by. And we implement a clustering rule, right? We have, we can't just revoke at random, you know, the, the permits from all but one of them. We, we can't just arbitrarily do that. There has to be a phase out that may last years or, or a grandfathering attrition that may also last quite a few years. And that's, that's much more unfair to the homeowners. So that's why I suggest we do this, you know, we've talked about wanting to do this in a way that is cautious and actually meets the needs of what was failed to do before, this is how to do it. One, one more thing was that, that is also not on here that I wanted to bring up, was the idea of, we talked about having a two-year waiting period and the reason for that is so that you don't have private equity attacking the market by blowing it up. In addition to that, another good way to do that is to limit it so that one person can't own 10 Airbnbs in the community, which is, again, makes that a, 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 a money-making activity rather than a, rather than a, a, something I'm doing with my second home. And we had that before where you'd have investors come in, they'd buy five houses and turn all five of them into Airbnbs. And that was, that was a relatively common thing that we had prior to Measure T, which was a number of those properties that, that sold. We, we saw that, for example, even after Measure T with the Picasso Group come in and try and do that for time shares. It's a similar tactic. Again, this is private equity coming in, buying multiples of houses. So in addition to the waiting period, I suggest we also have a system where not, no natural person can own more than one Airbnb permit.
Well, so, Mr. Robbins, you and I are, are so different because I don't think that profit is a dirty word and I think that it's okay if people have money-making operations. Because like I said, it has absolutely been constitutionally established that we can ban them, but it has absolutely been established that it is still a residential use. And I don't care if one person owns 10 or one person owns one or if one person owns 20, as long as they're well-managed and taken care of and they're not bad actors, I could, I could care less. Because profit is not a dirty word.
The problem is, it, it is when it comes at the expense of people's ability to actually live in the community, right? Because at, by that reason, you know, every house should just be an Airbnb and why have limits of any kind, right? Because every unit of housing is better, is more profitably used as a hotel for tourists than it is as housing for locals. And if we want to kick all the locals out and, and replace all the people who live here with Airbnbs, that is a more profitable outcome than, than having people who live here. But I think we, the reason we had, we don't have them up here yet, but the reason we had a strategic plan, top-level item that says, ensure that everyone who works here can, has the ability to live here. We don't do that by kicking people out and turning all of the homes into Airbnbs. And one of the ways we can limit that is by having a waiting period between purchases so that you're not incentivized to kick people out of their homes, to limit the number of, of units that one entity can own, one natural person can own so that they're not kicking 10 people out of their homes at once.
Okay. Mr. Bass?
Yeah, so I, I definitely agree as well with the, the two-year waiting period. I think that definitely is a good mechanism. I want to go back to a little bit more around, you know, we have the tourist core and commercial zones, right? That are a completely different kind of Airbnb use than what are residential zones. And I'm wondering, you know, we should be thoughtful in the way that we get to let people know that. And I don't know if the platforms, as I said earlier, could be potentially a way to do that. But I think we need to make sure that what is in a residential zone, people know is a place to bring your family. And, and that's for families to come and intermingle with the families that live in those residential zones. But it's not for parties. And if you do want to have a group of snowboarding guys, stay in the tourist core. And those VRBOs don't have the same restrictions and you're not going to have the same problems. And I don't know if we get that out through the property managers, if that's the responsibility of each property owner. But I think that's a very important thing that we do. And I, and I think there is possibly a mechanism with the platforms to be able to have that. You know, when you click on a rental that's in the residential zone, it just pops up a, a pop-up window and it kind of explains that to you. I, I think that's something that really could help try to let, guide people that, hey, if you want to, you know, bring up a group of guys and you're for a bachelor party, you should be in this end of town. You're not going to do well here because you're probably going to get complaints. You're not going to do well here because you're probably going to get complaints. And how we can get that message out, I think, could be really helpful.
So I would be more willing to lower the cap than I would be to do the buffering. And I still think that if, if we put in all of these things, the cameras, the decibel readers, strict enforcement, we give staff adequate funds to enforce, and, you know, don't allow them in multifamily and all of those things. It feels like we're doubling and tripling and quadrupling down on this, which sort of goes against the spirit of what we're trying to do. So if no one's willing to make a motion, I'll make a motion, and then we can see what happens. I move that we direct staff to prepare an ordinance, making amendments desired, making these amendments to the VHR regulations, that we do not limit VHRs in certain residential areas, that we do not establish a cap lower than 1,400, although I would be willing to go lower, outside the tourist core, no buffer. We do prohibit VHRs in all multifamily dwellings outside of commercial and the tourist core, that we require VHR owners to have 24/7 response, whether that's through a local property manager or local ownership, that we ensure all VHR permit fees achieve complete cost recovery, which includes enforcement and the cost of the program itself, that we allow preference to all VHR and QVHR permit holders who were in good standing at the end of each of those programs, that we change the VHR permitting to the police department, and that we do face permitting of no more than 150 VHR permits issued per month, that the planning commission decision on VHR permit denial and revocation appeals is final, that we change the occupancy to two per bedroom plus two, that we require cameras on parking and trash bins, that we have decibel readers outside of the unit, that an in-person check-in is required with signature on either a list of rules or a code of conduct, and that we require they do all defensible space work. And that's my motion.
So under this motion, one in every 10 houses would be an Airbnb.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Could I just have a question?
I guess I can second it, so I can ask a question.
And then we can have discussion.
Yeah, process, process. Defensible, defensible space, isn't that required anyway for dispensable space on all residential? Don't we have a defensible space ordinance that says that properties have to be maintained? And doesn't that apply to all properties?
If I can try to add clarity. I think what the motion is meaning is that prior to issuance, there would need to be a current inspection, signing off that it has met defensible space guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. That's exactly what I meant. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Mr. Bass?
I just heard a question.
No, he's, Mr. Jenkins seconded. So for me.
I know he's seconding. You left your name here.
Right, right.
Let me be clear. Mr. Jenkins seconded.
The reason, you know, again, I can't support this motion is because it really puts us right back in the division that we were in that caused the initial, you know, initiative. And going back to 1,400 VHRs is opening up 700 homes right now in our community to immediately be bought that are currently not owned to be VHRs. And I think that's something that's critical that we don't allow to happen over the next year, is that all of a sudden you've got literally investors coming in to buy these 700 homes, when we know that there's 700 homes that exist today that were previously VHRs owned by the previous owners. I think that's what we need to focus on, is let's let those go, let's give it a year, and then let's look at the real data in that year to guide us further. But I think that really, you know, what was the issue before was the fact that the, we did not have a buffer. There was people up by Heavenly, people in the Al Tahoe neighborhood, people in the Tahoe Keys neighborhood, as we heard in public comment, that were just literally surrounded by VHRs. All of a sudden, your residential street has literally become more or less like you're surrounded by overnight motels. If one of them's there and it's within 200 feet of you, okay, that's livable. And then again, it's not that, I think that if we just give it all out right now, we're basically, there's no way to put it back in. And I think that's why we've got to be mindful and know that we can come back in a year and change it. But if we just all of a sudden give it back out the way it was, we're just literally inviting the same fight that we had back in 2018. And I think we've got to be really mindful to not do that. We're in a very unique situation, having a clean slate to really allow this to roll out, and then really look at what are the effects, you know? Come back in a year and see, okay, how many complaints did we have? What did work? What didn't work? Are we renting all these VHR units out in, you know, how many times a year are they fully occupied? Or did we even reach a day that all 700 ended out? And if we didn't, well, then we know that we're probably okay, and we can keep it as it is. But I think just opening it up is going to probably open up people hitting the streets again, and who knows what else? I mean, you know, there's a lot of talk of even an appeal and different things that we really, I think, can avoid if we're mindful in the way that we roll this out. But if we just give it all to one side, I think we're not, we're not finding that middle. And to me, that's why I supported, you know, when we decided not to appeal. I supported that because of my belief we would find that middle ground. And just going back to 1,400 and going back to what created the initiative is not finding that middle.
And did I, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Wallace, but I don't think I, did I hear you say, did that you include a two-year delay on the transfer in that as well? I didn't hear that clearly.
You didn't, but I will. Hold on one second. So I would, I would amend my motion to include a cap of 900 and include the two-year waiting period on VHR permits for new sales. If, if Mr. Jenkins agrees with his second.
Before I agree to my second.
Mike?
Oh, before Mike and I agree to that. Mr. Bass, do you, based on your concerns, does that sound like a reasonable compromise? We're not going up to the 1,400. We've, what the mayor suggested is we move back to 900 and see how it works. Is that?
Well, the only reason it, it gets close, but the clustering is the issue. Again, I think you're going to find people that do end up with these surrounding them. And I think that is an issue. I think that's what's going to bring a major fight back to the council. I mean, it's, again, the primary use and why people buy a home in a residential zone is to live there. And again, I, you know, I live in an area where I have VRBOs all the way around me, but I don't have children. I'm, I'm okay with it. I've never had a problem with it. But again, I'm not raising a family. And I think that in our residential zones, we have to be mindful of what that primary use is. And if you just allow for, you know, your house to be surrounded by VHRs, I can see why that would be a real issue if I was trying to raise a family of three children, and all of a sudden this house that I invested in and bought is now surrounded by VHRs. I can deal with it if there's, you know, one here and one at the end of the street, you know? But I'm not just surrounded on all sides. And we did have a lot of issues. And that was what created the VHR or Measure T to begin with, was the fact that they would not reach this 150-foot compromise. At least that's what, and actually, I was here because I was fighting my own fight every council meeting. And I wasn't on the VHR issue, but I can remember that that was a compromise that was not able to be struck, and that's literally what brought the initiative. So I think us just going back and doing that is kind of inviting another initiative, which I do not, I think that's the worst thing we can do, is invite another initiative.
I think we've seen it's not as hard, an initiative is not as hard as people think it is.
Well, you know, you know, just if, if, if I may, and I mean this with respect to both sides. When people start telling me that, you know, we're going to, we're going to take you to court, or we're going to, you know, we're going to initiative you to death or whatever, I tend to climb up if I assume that what we were doing, we're doing, making our best endeavor to do so and to correct. So I get a little, you know, maybe it's my, my own experiences in governance. But the question on the motion, if 900 is not a sufficient number, what, what, what are you thinking?
I, I could get around the 900 number. To me, the issue, again, just becomes that clustering thing. You know, like, again, I think we've heard that over and over and over again, is that people, the people that were most upset were coming up and saying, I have six of these surrounding me. I mean, we heard it today in the Tahoe Keys. Like, that is, I think, critical, and it does also set the cap. I mean, we have the numbers that shows, okay, if we're 150, we're 1,288. If we're 200, we're 780. And then we can come back. Again, I'm not saying that we don't come back in a year and go, hey, we need more VHRs because we're seeing these all rented out, and hey, we haven't had problems, and so let's reduce that to 150. And then that's going to add 500 more in a year.
So, Mr. Bass, I was in the room too when all that was happening. That's how you and I met. It was amazing. We became friends because of it, because we were all in the room at the same time. But what I heard was, yes, I have five of them around me. But the more important part of that was that they had bad actors and there was no enforcement. And so I, I'm going to, I, I am not, I, I will respect that you can't support something that doesn't include. I can't support something that does include. I, I'm willing to reduce the number. I'm willing to look at it in a year. I'm willing to do all those things. But I think it has more to do with bad actors than it has to do with clusters. It simply does. If we're not doing our job, if we're not providing the resources to staff and giving them the direction that we want strict enforcement and that we give them all of the things that they need to do that, including what I feel are really important, because the three issues, we're parking noise and trash, and we're putting decibel readers and cameras and all of those things and requiring that, we may be solving a problem that doesn't exist. Because we don't, because we're doing the right things on this side of it.
We've never seen enforcement work, ever.
Because we didn't have it.
Hang on, hang on. We've never seen it work. So having a clustering is something we know that will space them out. And then we can take a year and see that enforcement works on the, on the spaced-out ones, right? We can then show that enforcement works, which will then provide a good reason to say, let's let them get more dense because enforcement has worked. But if we do it the other way, then we are presuming, we are hoping that the enforcement activities we do work without any reason, without any evidence. We are speculating that if we give more authority and we do all these things, that that will result in better VHR experiences for the neighbors, for the residential neighbors. But we don't know that until we actually try it. And if we do this without clustering, then that is, that is what we're relying on. If we do clustering and better enforcement, in a year, we can come back and see how the enforcement has actually worked in practice, how many complaints have actually happened in practice, and then come back and say, hey, enforcement's working great. We're getting very few complaints from the neighbors. Therefore, we can go up and say, we can increase the density slightly, and then make another step and see how it, see how it works out. If we do this the other way around, where we say, well, we're going to go to 1,400 or 900 with no clustering requirements, then, then we better hope that the enforcement works with no reason to believe it will because we've never, ever had working enforcement in the city before. We are making a claim that this changes that we do will do better enforcement, but we have no demonstration of that.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Ms. Stroud and Mr. Irvin, both of your hands are raised.
Yes, I know Mr. Irvin's hand's been up longer, but I just hate to have to be the parliamentarian because this is a good discussion, but I want to help move us along. So we did have a motion and a second, and then an attempt to modify the motion. And I don't know if there was an agreement to modify the motion.
Well, out of respect to the mayor, I will allow the modification. I don't know that I support the motion, but out of respect to the motion made, I will, I will, I will agree. But I, I think the, I, I think this is a very good conversation here.
If I may, I need a clar, since we're talking about that, with the motion and the second, I just want clarification that when you went through your original motion, Mayor, number six on the board.
I don't know what number six was.
It's increased consequences for violations. Owner can always be cited. Rules apply to all. Was that a part of your motion?
Yes, it was part of my motion. And what my expectation was is that staff would bring back in the first reading a methodology for that.
And David, here's my suggestion. If you, if, if this doesn't pass, is that I'm going, my next motion, if this does not pass, will be to table this to continue this discussion because you have a 10:30 break. And I think we should keep going on this topic in a, in the next city council meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I.
But that's only if the motion fails.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. Mr. Roberts, you have your hand raised.
I was just curious. I mean, I'm not going to beat up my old, old argument about, you know, the buffers and getting rid of them if we change the ordinance. But how, what is going to be the guidelines for knowing we can bring them back? I mean, is it going to be a lack of complaints? Is it going to be a lack of saturation? It just seems it's, I don't, I can understand your argument that if we have, we have six around somebody now, it's going to be hard to get rid of them. I understand that argument. But how, how is that argument that we're going to be easily, just as easily to bring more in? How is, where is the justification for that argument?
We just bring the, we just bring that item back in one year. We just put it on the agenda in one year to reevaluate, and then we look at the data, we look at the complaints, we look at how the programs go, the revenue, everything else, and then make a decision. We don't, it doesn't have to be triggered by some data-specific event. We can just review it on an annual basis. It's up to us. That's my suggestion.
I wanted to kind of think about it. Instead of creating an actual foot, why don't, why don't we say that you can't have a VHR permit on an adjacent parcel? So if you've got a VHR permit, the parcels that touch your parcel cannot have it. So it's not an exact footage, but that kind of guarantees that you're not going to be surrounded by them, right? So.
So every other house?
That's a 50-foot.
Well, like, yeah, so that, you know, well, but it's, it just depends the parcel size. But that means that you're not, if there's a VHR permit here, the four parcels that surround you exactly can't have VHR permits, so it's not an actual footage amount.
Across, back, side to side?
Exactly. And so that kind of creates where somebody's kind of guaranteed that they're not just going to be surrounded, but there might be one, two houses down, but it's not just right next door to them.
Can I, can I ask a question? So let's say the Keys. There's no house behind them. There's a, there's a thing. There's a lagoon. And, but the house across the lagoon would be okay because it's not immediately adjacent.
Does it make noise anyway?
That was just an example I was thinking of. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking. I'm trying to decide if I agree or not.
Again, again, the challenge, the challenge, Cody, with that is that, is that, again, that's, that functions as basically, because most of, that functions essentially as a 50-foot parcel, more or less, right? And again, that's very tight, and that makes it impossible to say we're still having a clustering problem because now we have a block where you've got 10 of them, and they're every other house, and they're across the street. And we can't redo, we can't step back from that. Again, that's why I'm pushing for us to take a cautious rollout here of doing it right the first time, where we can say, let's, let's bring these out gradually where they're not all packed together. We can demonstrate to the community, right? We can demonstrate to the people who voted yes on Measure T, which is the majority, that we actually can do proper enforcement and not screw over homeowners and renters and residents with, with being clustered around and show that we can actually do proper enforcement. So I don't, going back to this, if, I think the right call here at this point is if the, if there's still a motion that's to be voted on. If it fails, my, I'm going to suggest a motion to table to the next meeting because we've got a, you wanted to break at 10:30, and we're basically there, so.
Let me just say one thing. The reason I suggested that is because it didn't seem like we had the consensus to want to do the radius. So I was just trying to find a middle ground possibly that got us there. If we had a cap of 900 and we created that, you know, no adjacent parcels, that way you're not just clustered right next to each other. I was just trying to find the middle ground. Even though I agree with you, I want to go 200 feet. I don't know that we have the support.
What are your thoughts? I mean, you were asking me about how you would, how we would come back in a year and evaluate whether or not we want to increase the density.
Well, just because, you know, there.
Oh, microphone.
I got it.
I'm going to have, as bad as. Yeah. Just because I know there's going to be another conversation, and it's not going to be as easy as, hey, we're there, let's do it again. It's going to be a whole nother conversation and a whole, whole rerun on what we're doing right now. So it's just not, it's not that easy. It's not a plug-in. One thing I want to bounce off of what you just said about, we want to find something in the middle. All of these ordinance changes are things that affect the VHR owners. All the concessions, all the compromises that we are asking right now are on the VHR owners. They're nothing to do. They're nothing to do with the residents, and they're all to address the challenges that the residents have. And when, when you talk about someone who's got, I've heard quite a few people, not, not the majority by any means, that they had six of them around them, and they're all great. They've never had any problems. So, that's out there as well. The point being is that all the complaints, including yours, Mr. Robbins, is when people complain about a VHR, they're complaining about the parking. They're complaining about the trash. They're complaining about the noise. They're not complaining about that building. They're not complaining, oh, that's an ugly building. They walk out in the morning and say, I hate that building. No, they hate the trash. They hate the noise. They hate the, the bad actors. So, and, and what is the reason for that is the lack of, the lack of enforcement. And we had a, a situation in the past where it was even, even voiced publicly that they were not going to enforce it. So, I mean, I, I just disagree with you, with your perspective on, on how that rolls out.
Mayor, I, I just think that is a, a, really an important point that Mr. Roberts makes about the, the direction that was previously given. And, and I asked about that. I didn't really get a clear answer. That there was direction given not to enforce the previous ordinance, even despite all the work that was done, that there was direction given prior to probably most, all of us, if not all of us, to, to not enforce it. That's a big, that's a big difference. It means, you know, you can write all the rules you want, but if they mean nothing, it, it doesn't mean anything. So, enforcement is a, is a huge opportunity to do, do it right. And, and, and I, and so that, I, so I think, I, I have to weigh, weigh that. And if there's bad actors, I will be the first, maybe not the first, maybe the second, but I'll be the first. If this doesn't work, then I'm going to vote to revoke, to get rid of the program. I'm, I'm not going to have, I don't want to see an ordinance. I don't want to see a program in place that harms our community, who, people who live here in a, in, and, and I believe that enforcement is the way that we achieve it. If not, then maybe we ought to do something different and figure out other ways to improve our economy, which is having its own suffering pains and which this product could, it can, can, it can at least help, help our economy, our businesses, our jobs, our locals.
Mr. Jenkins, I will, I, I think you heard that from me. And I will just tell you firsthand, when I chose to run for city council, I met with your successor after you were city manager, and that person told me to my face that we, that we, the city, had a policy of non-enforcement. And that, and so that was firsthand. I, those were words that I heard. So.
You mean one of my successors?
One of yours, your most immediate successor. So, I'm, I'm going to call for the questions so that we can move on, move on if we need to. So, Ms. Blankenship, could you please do the vote? Are you singing the Jeopardy song?
No. I guess we're voting, so we can discuss.
If I, you know, tell me this part of the job.
Making decisions is our only job.
It's the only job.
I took a lot of decisions in my, in my career, but they were up to me to make the decision. So, it's, it is different. I have to take what you said, Mayor, in, with sincerity, and so I will vote there.
That motion carries?
Okay.
But I, but I, I want to be sure that in that, that we're doing outreach, that we're doing enforcement, that, that complaints are not ignored by anyone, not to put any blame or anything, and that, and that people understand who rent here, that this is not a carnival town. It's, it's a city, and that people have to behave themselves or get the hell out.
We 100% agree.
And that is a technical term.
This is just to bring it back next week. We still have more time to talk about, our next meeting.
Yeah, because we have the first, first reading at our next meeting.
We can still make amendments at the first reading.
Yeah. Okay, so, based on our previous vote of extending and only hearing one more item, the item that we will be listening to is item number 23. Ordnance Designating Very High Fire Severity Zones, and that is Chief Drennan.
This will be easy, right, Chief?
You can talk now.
Okay. It's still good evening. It's not good morning yet, so we'll start with that. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. For the record, Jim Drennan, Fire Chief. I'm presenting the staff report in front of you. This is the ordinance designating very high fire severity zones. This is the first reading. The Fire Marshal would have been here tonight. She had some things come up, so I am filling in. You have a fairly detailed and brief description in front of you. That's all very accurate. Essentially, in layman's terms, CAL FIRE, as the state's Fire Department, is tasked with determining these maps. This is a fire hazard severity zone map, not to be confused with a fire risk severity zone. So, keep that in mind for just a moment. A couple of things to go over, key elements with this. The Fire Hazards Very Model for Wildland Fire has two key elements. Probability of an area burning and expected fire behavior under extreme fuel and weather conditions. Factors considered in determining fire hazard within wildland areas are fire history, flame length, terrain, local weather, and potential fuel over a 50-year period. Keep in mind, that does not include structures. That does not include firewise communities. Whether or not you have a Class A roof, whether or not you've done your D-space, has nothing to do with that. They are looking specifically at fuel, weather, and topography. Hazard versus risk. The Fire Hazards Severity Zone Map evaluates hazard, not risk. The map is like a flood zone map where lands are described in terms of the probability level of a particular area being inundated by floodwaters, not specifically prescriptive of impacts. Hazard is based on the physical conditions that create a likelihood and expected fire behavior over a 30- to 50-year period without considering mitigation measures, such as home hardening, recent wildfire, or fuel reduction efforts. Risk, on the other hand, which is not this map, is the potential damage a fire can do to the area under existing conditions. It's a, it's an interesting distinction, and to head off, a couple of the questions that I can probably guess will come my way. These maps are specifically not used by insurance companies, so let me be really clear about that. Quite frankly, the insurance companies have far more sophisticated mapping systems than this. This is, technology goes back to about 2017, 2018. This is a requirement for CAL FIRE. Further, it is a requirement by state law for us to adopt it. This is the first reading. We need the second reading within 120 days. We received it February 10th? February 10th. So, we need to see that second reading before June 10th-ish. That's all I've got. I will be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, unfortunately, I, I have awakened. But first, I want to compliment the Fire Chief and for he and his department's service and their work. And I understand very well that fires that originate in the city limits are fires that you can handle. Fire, within the city limits, that the problem comes from fire in the state lands and the federal lands that surround us. And it's, and it's, I guess my comment, my commentary, and I have some commentary, obviously, is that it is curious to me, in the state of California, that, that CAL FIRE is so concerned about this that they allow their own lands, and they do little, they do some, with federal lands to make sure that fuels are reduced on, on, on those lands on a, on an expedited basis. And these maps, if they mean nothing, it, it's hard for me to believe that, that the risk in the city limits on properties that are with little foliage or little growth versus higher density properties, that they're of the same risk level. Now, I'm a poly-sci guy, not a fire professional, but that makes absolutely no sense to me. And maybe if, even if a computer tells me that, it still makes little sense to me.
So, the distinction here is very clearly hazard versus risk. And when they're defining hazard, they're very specific to not use the definition of risk. And by that, I mean they're looking at the landscape as though there are no structures. They are looking specifically at fire history, flame length, fuel, weather, topography. They have left out on purpose mitigating efforts such as firewise communities, defensible space, fuels reduction, shaded fuel break, a number of those types of things. So, to be really clear, that's the reason why the insurance companies aren't using that map. And so, there, there's a, there's a, there's a very valid concern out there, I think, because people look at this. And in fact, emails going back to February, you probably remember me saying something along the lines of, yeah, I had a question mark over my head too. This didn't make sense to me until we reached out to Chiefs Hoag and Chief Carter from CAL FIRE, who are tasked with this mapping system. This is very specific for them to look at the landscape and determine what the fire history, fuel, weather, and topography will do for fire behavior. And this is specifically not looking at neighborhoods, homes, streets, Class A roof or not. And so, I, I understand that's a hard distinction to make. They use it for planning purposes, and the insurance companies have assured us that map, it means nothing for your rates. And CAL FIRE has assured us that, no, that's not what the, the, the reason for that is. It's not there for that. It's there for a planning tool for us to look at the landscape overall.
And, and yet, they, they require us to adopt their, 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 their plan. They, they require the, the city to adopt their plan as though it was, no, that's why we have an ordinance? That we have to adopt their, and it's not used for any purpose except for their, their planning? And, and that's where I'm having a little trouble too. But you've clarified some things, that it's not being used by the insurance industry because we're in deep trouble if that's the case. And we're already in deep trouble, but that's another story. And so, it's not being used by the insurance industry to jack prices up or drop people in the city who, from, from fire insurance. But it's used for their purpose, but we have to adopt it by ordinance. That, that doesn't make any sense to me. But, but I, and I'm not saying you don't make any, you always make sense.
So, this goes back to state, state law, and I would actually more lean more on Heather Stroud.
You're right. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It, it does impact one thing that we do, and that's in the very high fire severity zones, it triggers the more stringent building code requirements for hardening when there's a new structure built.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
You're always articulate.
Are there any other questions for Chief Drennan? Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this item?
Anybody's awake.
Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom.
Yeah, we do have one hand raised. Melissa Soderston.
Just really quick, I do understand that this is a requirement. It's state law that required to pass this. This is an incredibly ignorant, dangerous ordinance. All it does is prioritize fuel reduction treatments, which have been proven to be ineffective in the case of extreme fire weather. The Fire Adapted Nevada Summit was in March. I attended. Their keynote speaker made it very clear that fuel reduction and fuel treatments, fire breaks, are not working. These are not forest fires any longer. They are urban conflagrations. These fires are spreading from structure to structure, which makes it incredibly dangerous that it's not even taken into consideration here. I do understand that it is a requirement that you pass it. I do hope that you put out a strong statement in opposition of what this says and that you will fight for funding for these home hardening ordinances to be implemented. We cannot afford to have these trees removed. We cannot afford to get the roofing that we need. We can't afford to remove decking. All of these things that are required in our home hardening ordinance, defensible space ordinance, are going to be impossible to implement without the funding. And all of that funding is being siphoned away into the greater forest area, way out in the back country, on our public lands. We need it here for our infrastructure. We need our Fire Department to be well-funded. Please, please, please voice your strong opposition to this ordinance at the state level. This is incredibly dangerous, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no additional hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion.
Sure. I'll put forward a motion to hold first reading by title only of an ordinance designating very high fire density, sorry, very high severity zones and refer second reading and adoption to the May 6, 2025 meeting.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
Okay, moving on, we'll just really quickly, Mr. Irvin, is there anything on the agenda, plan, and calendar you want to make us aware of?
The next meeting's May 6th, as you know. Looking at the APC, it's pretty hefty lineup of things, so I'll be shifting some things out to push some things out. It's a day meeting, but we can't.
Especially since we tabled a few items tonight, yeah.
You know, some of the day meetings also run to past 10:30.
So, exactly. Just, so I'm going to.
Especially since that one starts at 9:00 AM.
Some, some of the things on the list there will be moved out.
Okay, thank you. Any quick updates or announcements, Ms. City Attorney?
None from me, thank you.
Ms. City Clerk?
I just need to note that the mayor and I issued a proclamation yesterday to Live Violence Free Recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And then I have received three proclamation requests for Mental Health Awareness, Mental Health Awareness Month, and a Bike Month. Sorry, just two.
Everybody okay with those two?
Okay. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any quick city council member reports?
Just a question about, sorry, a question about the May schedule. Are we still doing military appreciation in May? I don't know if that's.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. These, those were just new requests, not ones that are already on the APC.
I just wanted to.
Mr. Robbins, do you have anything as an update or announcement?
Uh, no, David, did you want me to make a motion about the CTC thing, or do you want to do it? I, I liked your idea, but I'm, I'm happy to have you make the motion in a second, but.
Well, the, the request I am making is as a private citizen. I will be happy to, when I meet with the executive director of CTC, I'll be happy to report back to you on that conversation. What I hope happens is that the request to find out what other properties they have in mind to purchase will be something that'll be easily accessible. In the past, I don't believe that has been the case, but, but I have a lot of faith in the new executive director and that, since I understand the law pretty well on public records, I think, that I, I, I think we'll get cooperation. So, I'd be happy to report to you at, at the next meeting. If, and, and I would be happy to, if, if it's appropriate. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to report to you all, you of the proper, you all, you all, the, the results of that inquiry. And I don't know that we, at this point, since it's a private request, I don't know that I need to place it on the agenda.
Mr. Robbins, as the vice chair and the council member representative on the CTC, if you ever have any questions, you are welcome to ask me. And I will either, I will either know that or, or I will research it for you.
In that case, I'll make that ask. I, I suspect everyone on council would be interested in the same, but, but it, either way.
I could just tell you briefly that we have no, there, there may be one-offs here and there, but that there's no, like there was when the CTC was originally created and they had a plan for purchasing projects or properties. There is no plan. We take them on a case-by-case basis as things are brought up.
Well, if, if I may, Mayor, without getting into a discussion on, on the topic, simply to say that my understanding in a previous conversation was property purchases were not something that they publicly discuss. Or, and I just want to be sure that using the, the, the authority under the Public Records Act, that that is in fact the case. And, and I'm, and I'm sure Mr. Vasquez, he, I, I, I like him. I, I think he's real open, and it's, it's, it's a very nice change in, in, in the engagement process. So, I, I expect I'll have some kind of formal answer. But I don't want to read about something and have us read it in paper someday if there's some other commercial or residential properties that are being purchased that we knew nothing about.
Okay. Mr. Robbins, did you have anything else?
Um.
Besides a headache?
Yeah. We had a, there was a TTD meeting since the last time we met, and I'm trying for the life of me to remember.
It was obviously super important.
Yeah, right, no. It's only 11 o'clock, and, and, and I, I, I don't think it was super, that super important.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, just, we had one. I was there.
Thank you.
And.
Nice. There you go.
And its importance is now lost to me.
Thanks for representing us. Thanks for representing us. Mr. Bass?
Uh, yeah, I just have something really quick that, um, I would like to see as soon as possible. And I know we've got a very busy APC, but we need to have a discussion coming back for the JPA funding on transit. We have some issues with El Dorado County that, um, anyways, we just need to have that come back for a discussion with council.
I agree. Um, it probably doesn't need to happen at our May sixth meeting.
No, yeah, yeah.
Which is good.
I'm just saying as soon as they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have.
Um, Mr. Roberts?
I was just going to bring up the same thing that Cody, or Mr. Bass brought up, but thank you.
Mr. Jenkins?
No, ma'am.
I don't have anything.
Neither do I. Meeting adjourned.